I'd like to call the May 11th meeting of the City of Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please join me in the national, or pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'll save everyone from having to sing. All right, we'll go ahead and get things started, and we'll start with roll call.
Stephenson.
Here.
Carey.
Here.
Kimball.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Schlothauer.
Here.
Hampi.
Here.
All right, Mr. Manley, any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
Okay. Any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations?
None either.
Commissioners, do we have any declaration of conflict this evening that we need to declare?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a conflict on item 5A, the URD Pleasant View District Resolution, so I'll be stepping down for that tonight. Although it is not a conflict, it won't affect my ability to make a decision. There is a public hearing tonight for the North Place Zone Change, and the applicant is Greenstone. My company does work for Greenstone here and there, but we are not contracted to do any work on this project, and are we likely to?
Okay. Duly noted. Anyone else? Okay. That would take us to the consent calendar, Mr. Manley.
Yeah, item A is the meeting minutes from the April 13th, 2021 meeting. Item B is the reasoned decision for Teton Meadows subdivision file number S U B D 4 2021. Item C is the reasoned decision for Greensbury Glen subdivision file number S U B D 5 2021. Item D is the zoning recommendation for Greensbury Glen annexation file number A N N X 1 2021. And item E is the zoning recommendation for Laizan annexation, file number A N N X 2 2021.
All right, Commissioners, hopefully ahead of time, take a look at that, but look for a motion at this time.
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
My second.
Motion to second. Any further comment? Okay, call for vote.
Hampi.
Yes.
Schlothauer.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Carey.
Upstain.
Stephenson.
Yes.
All right, citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not on the agenda this evening. Comments on issues that are planned for the future meeting agenda, we ask that you would hold for that meeting. Do we have anyone here for citizen issues wishing to speak? But I do believe that we have some citizen issues that were via the Intranet, so do you want me to read those in at this time then?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have a couple citizen issues. First one is for Maureen Marion. Comment is, "As I am learning of all these annexations, I am realizing that traffic has not been considered at all. I just recently found out about 300, yes, 300 unit apartments on 41 and Pole Line. Now, I know what we'll do with traffic, it will be a mess. You'll have over 300 to 600 cars traveling in the intersection. Pole Line going east is a rural road, increasing speeding cars as homeowners turn into their streets. It's going to cause crashes. This has not been accounted for. Why is traffic not the top priority in planning? It's apparent that the dollars is the driving force, pun intended. I am truly worried about the east end of Pole Line." Next citizen issue is Michelle M. Corlison, and again, if I butcher your name, I apologize. "Members of the council, I live out on the prairie. There is a zoning request, after zoning request, monthly. I have written in before about the importance of updating the fire and law enforcement infrastructure before continuing all these high-density annexations. Let me run a few numbers by you. The current population of the Cootney County Fire and Rescue District is approximately 55,000 people. That includes all of Post Falls as the city, one handful of this area that does not have its own fire department. Cootney County Fire and Rescue has four stations. For optimum response time, they should average at about 10,000 residents per station. So do the math on that, and you're already negative one whole station. You're approving high-density apartment buildings that are about the square footage that is the normal truck fire, fire truck can service. They need new ladder trucks for those apartments and commercial spaces. Where is the money going to come from? Adding new residents to the city, commercials, adding new residents to the cities without updating the fire and the aid is irresponsible. I sat down with Chief Wei a few months ago. He is frustrated, to say the least. Response time are suffering, and it is only going to get far worse with the amount of traffic with these new developments that are going to add to our area." Cootney County Sheriff, I just got off the phone with Sheriff Norris because they have to pull Deputy Clausen back to a full-time before he was more or less stationed at Lakeside School District. They don't have enough deputies to allow him to do that. Jail is at 80% capacity with violent felons. For every 1,000 residents added to the county, one jail bed needs to be added at the cost of $90,000 per bed. Where is the money going to come from? Some of these developments are thousands of homes. How will the county be able to foot the bill for the new beds that are required because of the rise of crime that's happened in the influx of people? That crime is not going to get worse, that crime is only going to get worse as people are priced out of the housing market and are no longer able to afford rent. These things need to be handled before new annexation is approved, not as an afterthought. We do not have the obligation to house every family who wants to move here. We are not obligated to allow high-density housing just so they have somewhere to live. Our responsibility and obligation should first be the people who currently live here. Traffic is getting ridiculous. Terrible accidents are happening daily because of the influx of population that are adding more drivers to the road. Were the annexations constantly approved, why are the annexations constantly approved regardless of the public, popular opinion? Which is going to slow down growth and play catch-up? Please stop allowing such high-density housing and handle important infrastructure changes first without taxing current residents to fund them. Please put a pause on annexation. This isn't a race to see who can cram the most tract homes on the prairie. It should be about the members of the city and counties, what they want first. We are speaking loud and clear about what we want. Are you listening? And the last public comment, citizen issue this evening, is Chad Savore. "Here are the biggest issues for me and the most others that have growth concerns. It's not only about filling up the prairie and filling every vacant lot with homes, and that's ugliest at all. It's about overall quality of life. With more people in the area, you have more competition for goods, such as general shopping. But it has been a challenge to find things at our local store in the past year to do to COVID. But in general, it has been tougher as the population has increased locally. It's extremely frustrating not to be able to find what you need when you go out there. Burn the fuel, burn up huge chunks of time not to find essentials. Sure, maybe more stores are needed to go along with population increase, but many core have strict requirements about adding stores, Trader Joe's, for example. It's just not easy to get more stores into an open area. Smaller stores are great, but they can't compete with Fred Meyer, Super One, Target, et cetera." Traffic. This is a hotspot for most. "The area seems enormous increase in traffic accidents and fatalities. General traffic mayhem as population increases. The more motorists, the worse it gets. I remember when we first moved here 13 years ago, we would rarely hear sirens. Now we hear sirens regularly. We come from an area where sirens are nonstop. We pay attention to cues like this. Adding one more vehicle on the road is one vehicle too many. How fast can you change roads to accommodate the increased flow? You can't. We can't even get existing roads repaired in timely fashion due to monetary constraints. There are no feasible way to modify roads easily." Taxes. They're also huge for everyone. Taxes do not go down in time, ever. They go up. Even if you pay off your mortgage, you cannot escape taxes. You have to pay them. It's hard to retire and then have taxes increase over and over again when your income is not increasing. This consistently shrinks available funds to live on. When you have more people, you need more waterworks, more police, more fire department personnel, more schools, more everything, and someone has to pay for that. It always falls on the shoulders of the taxpayers. What I mentioned above is massive, and it is depressing to think about. Smaller populations are the best, they really are. What will you do about the above?" So, any other public comment? Okay, then we will go ahead and move on. Do we have any unfinished or old business this evening?
There's none.
Okay, that will move us into the main piece of tonight, and that is our public hearings. If you wish to speak, make sure that you fill out the paperwork and turn it in upfront, and you'll be given four minutes, and we will go ahead and get things started, and we'll open up Tulamore Ninth Subdivision. Ethan, it is all yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ethan Porter here, planner with the city, here to present the Tulamore Ninth Subdivision. Here we have the owners of this particular piece of property as Copper Basin Construction Incorporated. The applicant on their side is Lake City Engineer Incorporated. They are asking the approval to subdivide 33.42 acres into 13 commercial lots, plus one open track, one open space tract as well, which, as you see in the staff report, the preliminary plan that Lake City Engineering provided doesn't show that tract, but I will include it tonight. It's kind of a, it was missed, I believe, so you'll see it tonight as where that tract is going to be in the upcoming slides. So here you can see the hatched in red is the project location. They're right along Highway 41, running north and south. Here, you have Kildare Avenue running east and west, and then Hope on the south running east and west as well. Looking kind of more at the parcel, the current land use, as you can see from that site map, is basically vacant, so there's nothing on there. The water provider is Ross Point Water District for this area, and the sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. Here we can look at the zoning. You can see that it's red, which is community commercial services. You can see the red as well to the north, to the south, to the east, all being commercial, and then to the west, you see more residential, the R1 being the yellow. Here's the initial preliminary plan that they provided from Lake City Engineering. Here you can see on the west side, along the Tulamore cottages, there's a no construction area, no construction build zone area here. The difference between what they provided here and then what they changed it to is making that construction, that no construction build area actually tracked and open space, so they provide basically a 30-foot wide down south to 100-foot wide tract that'll be provided by an eight-foot wide multi-use path or trail system. So that'll be kind of in there to help alleviate and buffer those cottages at Tulamore to the west from the commercial sites. But commercial sites, as you can see here, right along Highway 41 as well, they all meet city code and standards for commercial lots. This kind of gives you a little overview of what's around this particular project location. North is to the right of the screen. You can see in the purple the cottages at Tulamore, which I was mentioning. That tract is going to be right along them on the east side. You can see in the north in the red, the Tulamore Eighth Edition, which is single-family homes there, and then just west of them in the green is Tulamore Place Apartments. South of the site, you can see, also in green, the park side at Tulamore Apartments, and then just west of them in the yellow is Tulamore Park. So you can kind of get an idea of what's surrounding the site, as well as Highway 41 there, to the west, obviously, as I mentioned as well. So, kind of looking more at the subdivision review criteria, we look at provisions for water and sewer. Mentioned earlier, the provisions for water are going to be from Ross Point Water District. The sewer capacity for the city is adequate, and as mentioned in the staff report, you can also see on the third review criteria, the streets being a part of the review, making sure that the transportation element of the comprehensive plan is being met, which it is. There's no issues with that, and they are connecting Bogey Drive between Kildare and Hope Avenue, so that road and the subdivision will be maintained and constructed with this subdivision. Looking at the fourth review criteria, we're looking at topographical conditions, any hazards or anything that may be on the site, which currently there isn't any, that has been notified or brought to our attention, so nothing of impact there. Looking at the fifth review criteria, we look at the zoning being proposed, as we saw it's along the Highway 41 commercial corridor, which it's zoned as commercial and used for, or the subdivision is proposing the commercial lots, so it does conform with that. Number six basically deals with making sure the community doesn't bear no more than its fair share of cost to provide services. Impact fees will be assessed at the time of building permits being pulled, and those will be offset by streets, parks, and public safety as well, so that's when those will be included. Looking more along this line, too, where this location of this project is, along 16th Avenue, just north of it, you saw the Nicholson Commercial Center. Lots that were also commercial right along Highway 41 that were also presented maybe a month ago or so as well, so this kind of keeps in the line of that commercial lots being built out on that commercial corridor along Highway 41. Here you can see the agencies that this project was routed to for comment, and then of these agencies will receive comments back from Post Falls Highway District, which they had no comment on this property or proposal. The Department of Environmental Quality remains neutral. They have the general comments within, as you can see within the staff report, that basically during construction, they have their own mitigation stuff, but that's at a later date when they start actually developing. So with that, I will open it to you for questions for city staff at this time.
Any questions? Do me a favor. Will you go back to the criteria?
Correct. Which one?
The first. So all six of those. Just for clarification, feel, I think that sometimes it's good to do a little bit of an education piece. My understanding is, is that the Commissioners this evening, when they render a decision, those are the six criteria on this particular hearing that we are basing everything off of, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions regarding those criteria?
I don't have any regarding the criteria, but I do have a question.
Anything else? Give it to Ethan.
On the, in our, in the staff report, this says that it's 33.42 acres, the current land use is vacant, current zoning, community commercial services, and then it says the proposed land use is a school, Elevate Academy, with a mix of commercial lots. I didn't...
Correct. I was going to let the applicant kind of discuss more on that, since city staff has not received anything regarding that proposal.
Okay.
We've had discussions preliminarily, but we have not, have received anything officially, so I didn't want to comment on that and kind of convolute it, but it is in the staff report, you are correct. They do propose on Lot 1 there in the northwest corner to be a school there, Elevate Academy, so if the applicant's here, they can expand more.
Okay, yeah, and I can ask Mr. Dittman when he's here.
Correct, but that is a good question, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
It does appear that Mr. Dittman is extremely eager to get up here. Do we have any other questions for staff?
I just had one. All access to the, to lots 1 through 9 are off of Bogey, right? There's nothing, no access off of 41?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Applicant, come on up.
Good evening, Chairman Davis. Commissioner Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue, City of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I will be brief, go for a little bit of the assumptive close. This is the remainder of the Tulamore commercial land that's left in the Tulamore project. We're anticipating Highway 41 is under construction. The completion of that will be soon. What better time to put some commercial lots on the market than when Highway 41 is being completed? This will, as Ethan said, will connect Bogey from Hope, right now Hope Avenue comes and, you know, stops right here at Highway 41. This will connect Bogey Drive all the way up to Kildare, and will also include the extension of Kildare from this intersection out to Highway 41, so that when Highway 41 comes through those intersections, both at, I lost my mouth, at Kildare and at Hope will be completed as well. So fairly straightforward project, 13 lots on about 33 acres. You can see the lots that are on the west side of Bogey are larger, they're five-acre tracks, or five-acre lots, excuse me. The lots that front Highway 41 are smaller acre to acre and a half size there. That provides us some flexibility, some different lot sizes, the ability to maybe do some lot land adjustments if we need to, to meet the demand of the market. To answer Commissioner Hampi's question about the school, we are working with the Elevate Academy. It's a new school. They are under contract to purchase Lot 1 right here and put a new school there. Very exciting opportunity for the City of Post Falls, and I've been working with those folks, great group of people, and they're super excited and super stoked to build a new school in Post Falls. So I can touch a little bit on the subdivision that's in your packet did not include this tract. After originally submitting the subdivision to staff and talking with the developer, it made sense to create that buffer as actually a tract that could be dedicated to HOA. The HOA could maintain it along with the rest of the property out there. The HOA maintains that everything is uniform, and we're not relying on individual property owners to maintain it, so the HOA can maintain it so that it matches the rest. We'll also be constructing, and you can kind of see it on this drawing, a meandering path that will connect Kildare down to Hope, and you can see this is actually part of the Tulamore Park right here, so that trail will provide direct access to the Tulamore Park for those residents that do live north of Kildare. So straightforward, I think. Questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Dittman?
I've got a couple of quick ones. Mr. Dittman, could you touch a little bit on what kind of traffic control is going to happen at Hope and Highway 41, as well as Kildare?
Yeah, so Hope and 41 is scheduled for a signal, and Mr. Melvin can speak more to that if you need to. Kildare and 41 will be right in, right out, access once Highway 41 is complete.
Okay, so there's, they're scheduled, and it's going to be, it's under construction?
It's under construction. Timing, Bill probably knows better than the timing than I do.
Do you anticipate having this online about the same time?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public comment, those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
None.
Those opposed?
One.
Harlan, are you making on-the-fly changes? Does not wish to speak and remains neutral. No comment. Okay. Any others?
That is it.
Okay. Mr. Dittman, I don't believe there's any need for rebuttal. Commissioners, questions for staff, applicant, anything else that needs to be covered in regard to the project, the criteria, or anything else? No? Or good? Going once and twice?
I actually do have a question.
There we go.
Is there any special permitting for a school, or is that just, would that just fall under?
In our land use table under our city code, it does allow the school to be under the CCS zone.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comment, Mr. Dittman? Okay. Okay, anything else? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close things out. I'd open it up for comment. Any, anyone care to comment on the project?
I just think my concerns would be that traffic signals are in place before they start selling the properties. I mean, it's one of those things that's backed up there enough, and if we open those 13 lots, which would be 50 cars minimum at a commercial base, I mean, without traffic control, that's just to say, you know, just to assume that it'd be open when it was done. Almost seems like it has to run in timing with it.
Well, it sounds like the roads are going to be open and everything put in place before construction starts, so.
That'd be my concern.
Okay.
So this sounds to me like this is, you know, I think the Tulamore project started and was originally done in 2006. This is just a, this is a long time coming, 15 years later, after a whole lot of residential goes in. Now finally, the commercial follows. This is a great opportunity for the city to get some commercial highway frontage businesses. I think it dovetails nicely with regards to the Highway 41. Timing-wise, the Highway 41 project is supposed to be paved out and complete, or at least be temporary signals, I think, by the end of this year, and I think completed by the end of next year. And we have to remember that even if they, you know, subdivide this thing and get it done this year, they still have to build buildings before there's any traffic associated with any sort of commercial enterprise in there. So with the, I don't think that the, I think the traffic will actually follow very nicely. I'm sure that they're, a commercial business is not going to open there until they can get traffic into their business. So, and that's the, that's the other important thing, is that there's no access from Highway 41 to get a business in there. So they're looking at Highway 41 to be complete at the same time as well. That's really important for a commercial business. They got to get their customers to them. So, and I think it meets all the subdivision criteria. I mean, they've, it's all fairly straightforward. There aren't any water, water and sewers available, transportation, there's collectors all the way around. It's got highway frontage. I think it meets all the criteria.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think it's clearly a good spot for it, and the, you know, as short as we are on housing in Post Falls, we're shorter on commercial space, and I like that it's immediately adjacent to so much housing because, you know, as people have expressed concerns about traffic, having the commercial adjacent to the residential helps the live, work, play concept, and keeps people closer to home and reduces traffic. And the way it's laid out, it should be good access on 41, once that's completed. And if there was any stipulation, I would think it would be on, rather than a lot sale, on a building permit, probably, yeah.
Or an occupancy, maybe? I mean, the signaling concerns me a little bit, too, having proper signaling and out on highway, out to Highway 41. But Mr. Kimball did make a really good point in the commercial...
Probably take care of itself.
Commercial, yeah, is they're not going to want to build a brand-new building, an open business, and not have people be able to have good access in and out of that business, which is a little different than when you're looking at multifamily, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I don't know if you guys noticed, but in the packet, there was a question someone asked, "What are you doing about businesses?" This is what we're doing. This is, this is a great opportunity. You look at what took place, what was it, a couple months ago, with a similar commercial subdivision, and being able to begin the necessary pieces. It will take time, but to get us to the point that we can actually have some amazing services along 41 added to what's already there as well. So I would entertain a motion from someone at this time.
I got it. Yeah. I'll move to recommend approval of Tulamore Ninth Subdivision, file number S U B D 0007 2021, finding that it's consistent with the comprehension plan, and adopt the facts and findings and conclusions and conditions 1 through 9 contained in the staff report with the requested zoning of CCS.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any further comment? Okay, call for vote.
Stephenson.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Schlothauer.
Yes.
Hampi.
Yes.
All right, so moved. This brings us to public hearing number two, or B, in the agenda, the Brenner Annexation File. We'll go ahead and open it up. Laura to present. the Brennan annexation file. We'll go ahead and open it up. Laura to present.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, here tonight to present the Brennan annexation. The property owner is Nathan Brennan, and Ace Solutions is the applicant. The recommended, or, excuse me, the requested action tonight is to make recommendation to City Council for the zoning designation of single-family residential on four point nine one acres as part of an annexation request into the City of Post Falls. The annexation location is north of East Bluegrass Lane between Cecil and Greens Ferry, and the staff report refers to both Bluegrass Lane and East Hope, that should be Hope Avenue, excuse me. At Cecil, Hope changes to Bluegrass, just for clarification. So at some point in the near future, Bluegrass will probably be renamed as Hope. So those two are kind of used interchangeably throughout the staff report and this presentation. The current land use, it's built out with a single-family residence with multiple accessory structures and some agricultural uses. There are no geographic or natural features that would prevent further development of the site. The water provider is Ross Point Water District, and City of Post Falls will provide sanitary sewer. Looking at the surrounding zoning, to the north, east, and west are all Cootney County properties. They're zoned agricultural, five-acre parcels, built out with single-family homes. To the south is a R-one, it's Corbin Meadows subdivision, although it has not begun construction. It was approved in February of twenty twenty. Looking at the built environment, you can see there Corbin Meadows, the preliminary plat. So it was approved for seventy-seven acre, or, excuse me, seventy-seven lots. And then again, those single-family homes to the north, east, and west. And then additionally, you'll be seeing in about two weeks, these two lots coming in for a proposed annexation with R-one. So this area is a county island, and it's potentially filling in fairly quickly. Staff looks at six zone change review criteria. The first is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. The future land use map zoning design, or, excuse me, land use designation is low-density residential. You can see here in the yellow on the future land use map that everything around it is also that low-density residential. The comprehensive plan states that the category encompasses all types of single-family residential uses, up to eight dwelling units per acre, and the R-one single-family residence zoning district is an implementing zoning district within the low-density residential designation. The second zone change review criteria is that it is consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. So staff reviewed and outlined multiple goals and policies in the staff report. But the main goal that I want to hit on tonight is that Goal Seven is to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. And two policies, there were more in the staff report, but two that I want to highlight again is Policy Nine, and that is to encourage the annexation of county islands within the city. And Policy Fifteen, to ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through provision of a diverse housing type and price level. So we all know that we've been in a housing crunch, so these two policies will help alleviate that and support this annexation. Next is that the zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic and natural features. Our engineering staff has confirmed that East Bluegrass or Hope Avenue is designated as a major collector, and right now it is an unimproved dirt road. So once it is improved and brought up to city standards, it can accommodate the proposed development. As mentioned, the water district is Ross Point Water, and the applicant has provided a will-serve letter, and they have the availability to serve the site. City of Post Falls will be providing sanitary sewer. It was approved for construction from having a sewer main go down Bluegrass from Greens Ferry with the Corbin Meadows subdivision. I mentioned that they're not actually starting construction yet. So if construction on Corbin Meadows is not commenced at the time this development wants to start, they would be responsible for putting that sewer main down Bluegrass from Greens Ferry. And then sewer is also in line with the city's water reclamation master plan. Next is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with a higher road classification. And as I mentioned, Bluegrass or Hope, they, I guess it is considered a higher road classification, although it's not applicable to the zone change or the annexation zoning criteria, because we're not asking, or the applicant's not asking for a commercial or high-density, but the road classification would accommodate it. And then additionally, commercial and high-density are not supported by the comprehensive plan in this area. Next is that limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential are typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. This area is mostly single-family homes, single-family subdivisions, and the closest high-intensity urban activity would be along Highway forty-one, which is approximately three-quarters of a mile to the east. Lastly, industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. This criteria is not applicable because the applicant's not asking for industrial zoning, and there are no industrial zone properties or uses within the area. This is the list of agencies that were routed and given a chance to comment on the project. Of these agencies, only three responded. Post Falls Police Department was neutral. The Post Falls Highway District was actually in favor of this one, stating that additional annexation of Bluegrass Lane would provide continuity of city services along with ease of maintenance. And then the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality just had general comments that will be applicable at the time of development when they come forward with a proposal. And with that, I can take any questions.
Would you tell me again what's going in south, on the property's south?
That is Corbin Meadows. That was approved in February twenty twenty, and that is a seventy-seven-lot, single-family residential subdivision.
So is that, being there, is that what creates a connectivity to, for this piece of property to already city properties, or properties within Post Falls city limits?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is this R-one, or are they requesting R-one or R-one S?
They're requesting R-one.
Any other questions regarding the project or the criteria? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll invite up the applicant.
Hello, I'm Nick Ebner with Ace Solutions here in Post Falls. I'm sitting here with Jim Brennan. His son is Nathan Brennan. Nathan can't be here tonight, but we're here. Yeah, I mean, thank you very much for that presentation. It was very, it was informative of kind of what we're looking for on this project. You know, some things I want to hit is, this project is, we're currently located on a county island. We're surrounded up by a lot of city property. The direct neighbors to the east and west are county, but to the south is in the city, and pretty close to us on both east, west, and north is getting into the city. So we'd like to kind of sort of alleviate these islands and fill out some property that we've got here. You know, as you mentioned, Hope Avenue is a major collector. It's currently, you know, right where it is, Bluegrass, it's going to need some work, and we're willing to do that. We're going to be giving up some right of way and, you know, increasing the width and making Hope into a major collector so that along the future, it will be able to carry, carry more people for what it was designed to do when it becomes, when it changed from Bluegrass to Hope. Yeah, we, Ace Solutions is also the ones that were, that presented Corbin Meadows, so we are well-familiar with the sewer issue. The Brennans are familiar with it as well. It sounds like at this point, they are not in a hurry to build out the subdivision, so we may wait until Corbin develops. We are not certain of that at this time, but that sounds like the plan at the moment. And, yeah, I think, I think that this meets the city's requirements, and, yeah, we're looking forward to starting to work on this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions for applicant?
No.
Anything? No? All right, we'll hold on just in case there is any need for rebuttal, and we'll move to public comment. Any in favor?
None.
Any neutral?
One.
Okay. All right, not wishing to speak, remaining neutral, Harlan Schlinker. Harlan, are you here? There you are. Did I nail it yet? Schlink? Huh?
This time you did.
Perfect. I've been working on that. I'm a slow learner. So, not wishing to speak, remaining neutral. Do we have any opposed at this time?
No.
Okay, so I believe that there would be no need for rebuttal unless there's anything else that the applicant cares to add?
No, no, nothing to add.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for staff, applicant? Transportation, anything? No? Okay. Nancy, one more time, I'll ask. I'm not picking on you.
No, I'm good.
All right, then we'll go ahead and close it out and open this annexation file up for comment. Anyone care to share their thoughts?
I'm comfortable with it being annexed in with the R-one zoning.
Okay. Anyone else?
I am as well. I think it's appropriate. It really is infill, and it's an appropriate zoning designation for that area.
I would agree that it's an appropriate zoning, and, you know, as we're talking about infill and things like, you know, when the city is expanding, those are pockets of county inside that are completely surrounded by city that we should be focusing on because the services are already there. The roads are already surrounding it. City roads are already servicing those properties, or at least going to be. And so even though that's a private road right, or privately maintained road right now, all those people dump out right onto city streets. And the fact that now it'll be paved out to Hope, and Hope's going to go out to Highway forty-one at a signalized intersection, that just makes that all that much, makes much more sense, even more so. So I think that R-one is the, meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan. It's an island, and I think the two items to be considered in an annexation agreement are also appropriate, as listed in the staff report.
Any other comment?
I just would say that it's not our decision if it gets annexed or not, but if the City Council decides to annex it, I think R-one is what would make everybody in the area the most happy, and we need the space, so it makes sense.
Okay. Anybody else care to share? I do appreciate the fact that the Highway District has stepped up and put comment in favor. I know there is a lot of conversation about infrastructure, and how is infrastructure coming to the area? We can't have more growth with that infrastructure. I think this is a piece that we're actually going to see some connectivity, and that infrastructure's going to be put in place. So, if nobody else has any other comments, I'd look for a motion at this time.
Oh, I will. I move to recommend approval of Brennan Annexation A N N X zero 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 four twenty twenty-one, finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopting the findings, conclusions, and conditions one and two, as contained in the staff report, with the requested zoning R-one.
I second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other further comment? Call for a vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlaughour?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All right, moved on to City Council. All right, then that will bring us to the final public hearing of the evening. One thing to stress, if you came here tonight and do wish to speak in regard to the North Place Zone Change, this is kind of last call to make sure that you get your paperwork turned in upfront. The other thing is, is that we're all going to be civil through the entire public hearing. I do ask for no cheering, clapping on either side, because we're all trying to work together to make the city a better place. With everyone understanding that, we'll go ahead and open up North Place Zone Change. Mr. Manley to present.
Good evening, Commissioner. John Manley, Planning Manager at the City of Post Falls. Trying to get my clicker. There it goes, the clicker. So, yeah, North Place Zone Change, R Z and E one two thousand and twenty. The applicant is Kevin Schneidmiller, representing Greenstone, Cootney Two. The zone change is proposed for two hundred and thirty-nine acres. It's currently zoned, single-family, R-one. And for the proposed residential mix zoning district, the site is currently mostly vacant, undeveloped. Portion of land on the southwest corner is currently being subdivided as part of an extension of the northeast project. Project location is, as you see here, it's south of Prairie, east of Idaho, a little bit west of Greens Ferry, and then north of the Fieldstone subdivision. Project scope, so the text here is fairly small, so it's difficult to represent what is being proposed here. So what I did is transferred this into some colors to hopefully denote what is being proposed. So what you see in the all-yellow, and this hopefully will dispel some of the information about this project as being a multifamily project for a residential mix at eighteen dwellings per acre, that predominantly where you see yellow, that is proposed to be single-family attached and detached only, for what you see in yellow. The areas that you see in orange at this location, which do happen to be along major roadways of Idaho and Prairie, is to propose a, two options, either multifamily or single-family attached or detached. Where you see red, there's three options. That is either neighborhood commercial, multifamily, or single-family. As I go through this, you'll see that there's some restrictions with residential mixed zones that you don't see in other zoning districts, and it does require a development agreement that then ultimately will put together, and it'll be a contractual agreement that goes before City Council that will accompany the proposed zone change. Also, in green that you see there, that is a proposed future neighborhood park. I believe the applicant, and they can speak to that, is proposing anywhere from a seven to nine-acre park to go along with this proposal. In blue, you see the future roadway connections that would go east and west, Penrose. So really, you've got Bluegrass, Hope, and Penrose. Where the final road name is, I don't know at this point in time. Eventually, when they all connect, the verdict will be out. But that'll get these residents to the east, to forty-one, and it'll also use Kildare as another option to get easterly to forty-one. So at this location, and kind of why the future land use map ended up the way it did, when I go into it with some of the commercial and neighborhood nodes, the neighborhood commercial, is this area highlighted in green has currently about thirty-six hundred and sixty-three housing units of a population base of about nine thousand three hundred and forty people. And I believe that's about the same size of Rathron, give or take a little bit. So you have a population base with no services that are equivalent to Rathron. So where they have to go, going back to this slide, is they would have to go a mile and a half east to a corridor, which we hear all the time, is full of traffic and is being widened, or they go further to the south to Mullen Avenue. So similar to the last discussion, where you have commercial near the residence, in return, you potentially could lower your- in return, you potentially could lower your BMTs associated because people don't have to travel far, it's not far for their services. So, you actually could improve traffic circulation a little bit as people reside and do their commerce closer to home. Additionally, we know that with commercial, big box stores are having a harder hard time to, to exist. But neighborhood commercial seems to be one of those opportunities to, as long as you have a decent population base and meet the community needs, to finally compete as it's tougher and tougher as people are shopping online. You get an experience with commercialism rather than to going shopping to be in your car. So parcel information of the site, like I stated, mostly vacant with some of it developing. There's no significant topology or vegetative matters. Water provider, west of Serenka would be the City Post Falls. East of Serenka would be Ross Point Water District with the City Post Falls providing the sewer. Zone change criteria. You're looking at the future land use map, is it consistent with it? Goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, is it consistent with it? And you also look at street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, community plans. Are there any other natural features to prohibit the proposed zone change? Looking at the zoning currently, you see the R1 and you see the single-family developments to the south and west. It's the yellow with single-family with green meadows to the east. So you got North Place to the west and the golf course, Fieldstone and Green Meadows. Here's that future land use map that I referenced as part of the intro. Here's those commercial nodes. You see there at the intersections, um, probably the major intersections. That's where you'd see potential for, um, outright commercial at those locations. They lend themselves because of the traffic pattern and, and what kind of use they'd be to be at those locations. Limited or neighborhood commercial often aren't at those locations because you have major intersections and safety and you're trying to promote walkability to neighborhood commercial. Hence why you see it protrude a little south into the north of, the proposed North Place because that would be an area where the residents could safely migrate via pedestrian trails and multi-use trails to that location. I attempted to do this, I believe my transparency is not a, transparency is not a hundred percent great. But you can see here, here's those nodes. And then right here is that green limited or neighborhood commercial, um, as denoted on the future land use map. The, to me, by this interpretation of this, it seems like the applicant attempted to be consistent with the, their proposal for, uh, in terms of the future land use map as well as the low-density designation. So the low-density residential designation that's on that future land use map, principal uses and character says, the category includes all types of residential use up to eight dwelling units per acre. You have the R1S, R1, and then there's the RM, the residential mix, as a potential implementing zoning district. So, in the intent of the RM, and it was discussed as part of the public hearings, was to diversify the housing product that the form of development that we're currently experiencing, where you have entry-level homes at 409,000, which I'll cite later, and multifamily apartments, is creating a dynamic where it's getting more and more difficult for people to purchase home and get entered into the home buying, um, atmosphere or products. It was just desired to keep their density at a certain point and that was where the benchmark was at eight dwelling units per acre. I've referenced focus area and you can see it here for the slow density. And looking at some, what it states, this is obviously some small font and I underline the areas of highlight, but I created a slide to talk about what they propose. So with land values increasing, new projects are more likely to integrate higher density housing with community amenities to broaden their appeal to buyers. So with this proposal, you're seeing the park, the neighborhood commercial and as well as potentially a mix of housing product. Next one, future growth should embrace a variety of housing types and land uses to maintain quality standards and provide even greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness and connecting neighborhoods to community trails and nearby amenities. Once again, it kind of taps into, we're creating neighborhoods of the experience rather than just track homes through curbed linear streets. You've seen in the last public hearing that was presented, there's some other goals and policies and they're cited in the staff report to create that mix of housing product and diversification and address future housing needs. Support provisions for a variety of housing types and densities. So how did we get here to the RM zoning? Well, it was recognized, um, about two years ago that we were heading this direction. And how are we gonna deal with the workforce? How are we gonna deal with potentially our kids and how are they gonna live here down the road? Especially if we maintain the fastest selling market. And this was recently published and Boise is being the fastest selling market. I think at the time, there was only 16 days on the market. It may be faster now, I don't know. You look at the home values, this was, um, just a couple months, six weeks ago. 362,000. I look today, 409,000 is the median home price now. So, and there's the curve. When it starts to flatten out, we don't know. Some say we should be hitting it soon. I looked at other markets, it's still, there's still markets with decent equity around the Seattle area and in California with a lot more higher population base that can continue to migrate this way. The other concern and why this district was created is we looked at affordability and the incomes people make. And in here, the red line is the rate in which Idaho residents increase their income. You have the United States here in black. California is higher in green with Washington down. So, not only are our home prices getting closer and closer to areas like Sacramento and Citrus Heights in California, our incomes aren't associating and running in parallel. So it's getting more and more difficult for the workforce to get into the entry-level home buying market. Freddie Mack for the Business Insider stated that there's 3.8 million additional housing units needed. Over the past 40 years, the construction of entry-level homes has decreased 84%. So in 1970s, as a nation, we were producing 418,000 entry-level homes every year. That's decreased to 65,000. So it was a great opportunity for the boomers to buy houses because there was, um, houses being produced for them to get into the entry level to build equity and build their, their base. Now though, with not that many entry-level homes, it's getting harder and harder for the next generation to get that wealth, to get that generational wealth that was afforded previous generations. So you couple that, incomes not rising, housing costs going up, opportunities decreasing. Here's what I referred. Here's the home prices and the two choices. You got, you know, rents currently 925 to 1,500, that's probably on the low end. If they provide garage, you're over $2,000 a month for rent. And then, once again, this was a couple months ago, home prices I found here in Post Falls. Is the RM zoning gonna be the answer for all of it? Probably not, but it could potentially provide opportunities. And this was part of the public hearing process in the comp plan. And as far as the zoning districts we created, looking at getting diversity in this housing product. This diversity, as you see here, potentially some tiny homes, some smaller square footage and some smaller lots. I don't believe this applicant is intending to do this on their project, but with the zone, it provides an opportunity for this product. You know, even at $300 a square foot, tiny homes and the price of lots these days would still be an expensive endeavor for some. Same with cottages. Right now, it's oftentimes difficult to provide cottages in our standard R1 zoning, but they're a good product that could fill a good housing niche. Townhomes. We don't see a lot of townhomes, but it is an option within the RM zoning to provide a little bit increased density, but still a good single-family housing environment. That's not a three-story walk-up apartment. The RM zone does still allow the typical 400,000, 500,000 dollar single-family home. It does allow up to 20%, so there's a cap. You can't exceed 20% within the, and you would have to, and that would be memorialized within the development agreement. The neighborhood commercial, that's capped at 10%. So 70% of the land has to be done in product other than multifamily and other than neighborhood commercial, which then puts it into a diversity of single-family product. This is an example up by Liberty Lake of a neighborhood commercial. Actually have difficult finding a lot of neighborhood commercial circa 2020. A lot of it is out, you know, you see neighborhood commercial in older parts of town developed before the onset of automobiles. And then we went to malls, now we're going back. So, this is some pictures of some storefronts, potentially that would be neighborhood scale. You see the sidewalks and you can see the connectivity to that, providing potential services, be it, who knows, an ice cream shop, a restaurant or other daily need services, maybe a daycare. So that kind of wraps up the, um, why RM zoning exists. Is there any questions about the RM zone at this point?
I don't have a question about the RM zone exactly, but you, you mentioned something about, it would be a population of like 9,000, like the size of Rathram and with, with no commercial services, right? What, you weren't just talking this parcel? Or yes?
I'm going to it now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just.
This is a current situation. This was where, not adding these housing units to it. This is currently by doing, utilizing GIS. The housing is, also includes the low-density Prairie Meadows to the west and rooftops within the county. And then we then looked at the PPH, persons per household in the last census, which was 2.68, which has probably gone down since a lot of people moving here don't have as many kids.
Okay.
I suppose we're probably gonna be closer to two and a half when we get our new census. But looking at that though, that's about 9,000 residents that currently reside without commercial opportunities or services.
Okay, okay. I, I have a better understanding of that. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for staff while we?
Well, I'm not quite done yet. Gotta go to the other.
I knew you weren't done, but I thought you paused.
Yeah, true, that's true. Sorry.
Tell Nancy ask her question, anyway. Any other questions? Okay, please, Mr. Manley, proceed.
Okay, so then the fourth criteria, after I belated the other three. Commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. You did see that in the proposal, it's along Idaho Street and Prairie Avenue, the higher density opportunities at those locations. The next one, you see the limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned along properties as you proceed farther away from high-intense urban activity areas. So, this, that's what they're proposing is neighborhood commercial. Like I said, it's a mile and a half from 41 and about a mile and three-quarters from Mullen Avenue. What makes the limited commercial, neighborhood commercial, it often is a good location to accompany neighborhood commercial with some degree of multifamily. And so seeing that in there doesn't, isn't inconsistent with this criteria. And within the staff report, you didn't see anything, any concerns regarding the transportation of that either. The last one, dealing with industrial zoning, isn't germane as they weren't asking for industrial zoning on their site. Agencies routed is as you see here. The Posthaus Police Department commented as neutral. The highway district had no comment pertaining to the zone change request. And DEQ commented that they didn't have any environmental impact comments associated with the proposed zone change. There's the overview and I'd stand for any questions now.
I do have a question. And looking at this, um, if they used all the, um, the parts where there are things, it could be commercial, um, um, multifamily. If they used all of that and the ones melted, the whole center part of this would be multifamily, could be multifamily feasibly, right?
Well, I think the thing to consider is that development agreement is gonna end the code caps them. So, what the purpose of this for is to have some flexibility in saying, that's a good location for multifamily, so is that. And so these are areas that are consistent with the future land use map, that are consistent with the goals and policies and allows some flexibility through it. And in the development agreement, we'll then nail them down a little bit more in detail.
Is there a limit to the stories, John?
What's that?
Is there a limit to the stories?
Well typically you would say that for multifamily, you would, um, condition them to meet the R3 performance standards. So that would make it 45 feet.
Other questions?
John, what's the height standard for single-family?
Single-family is 35.
So multifamily is only 10 feet more?
10 feet further, yeah. Doesn't mean you don't get two-story multifamily and it doesn't mean you don't get one stories. The both zoning areas have different flexibility in it.
But you couldn't go three-story?
Three-story.
Multifamily?
Hmm, yeah.
You could?
Yep.
Yeah, 45 feet.
45 feet's typically a three, yep. And it's feasibly with a flat roof design, you may even be able to go to three with
Okay.
residential, but it gets a little tricky at 35. Once again, there's more areas colored than what they can actually construct because once they get 20% is all they could do, multifamily and 10 for neighborhood commercial.
John, how much do you think is, uh, percentage-wise, do you think is colored up there, just for our reference?
If I was to just look visually?
Yeah.
To me, it looks, um, 60% yellow. It looks possibly with multifamily, 30% with another 20% possible with the neighborhood commercial, just looking at it graphically. Anybody else in the audience that may have a different perception of?
Sure.
Other questions?
All right.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Leave, did I see Mr. Schneidmiller?
I think Stephanie's gonna, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I have a, a PowerPoint presentation that I'll run through and, uh, Mr. Manley did a good job of, of providing, uh, quite a bit of the information from the staff perspective. So, again, my name is Kevin Schneidmiller, I'm representing Greenstone Cootenay 2. The applicant, I reside at 6552 East Octavia Court, Post Falls. Again, our request is for a zone change to, uh, what we can call the North Place East, um, neighborhood. And, um, the request is to rezone 239 acres from residential R1 to the mixed-use RM zone. Uh, again, as Mr. Manley said, the site is north of the Fieldstone subdivision, east of Idaho Road and south of Prairie Avenue and approximately 600 feet, uh, west of Greens Ferry. The, uh, the site is, uh, 266 acres in totality. We are seeking a rezone of 239 acres. We did a preliminary subdivision on the difference, uh, and was approved in early 2020. And there are currently single-family homes under construction in that, uh, right now. This is a, uh, map of the area, um, a little bit different than what Mr. Manley depicted in the fact that I have kind of cut out the North, uh, North Place East preliminary plat, which is in the southwest corner of the site. Again, this is the map and I, I apologize, the print is, uh, difficult to read, but, uh, I did want to spend a little bit of time on this. So as Mr. Manley said, uh, a vast majority of it is for, uh, being proposed for single-family, uh, residential construction and it's both single-family detached housing as well as single, uh, single-family attached housing. And I'll show some pictures later on of some examples of the attached product. Uh, again, we have focused our request for multifamily and neighborhood commercial around the Again, we have focused our request for multifamily and neighborhood commercial around the, both the Collector Streets, north and south, east and west, that being Penrose and Sarinca, as well as closer to Prairie Avenue with some of the multifamily, that being a principal arterial. Again, our focus is to try to keep all of the single-family housing buffering current residential, both Fieldstone, some new housing to the, on the eastern boundary of the project, as well as along Idaho. The reason we are proposing some multifamily along Idaho, we anticipate the northwest corridor of this project to be a empty nester project of approximately fifty to sixty acres, of which our experience has shown in some of our other projects, that some limited amount of for-rent property is desired. Not everybody in that demographic desires to be a homeowner. Some prefer to have the ability to rent. And so that's the reason you see that. In that type of setting, it's usually product that is smaller in scale, typical to single-family residential two-story product. And in smaller pods of six to eight to ten units to a pod, do not anticipate more than maybe twenty or thirty rental properties in a project like that. That neighborhood would also be all maintenance-free in nature. And so again, that's why you see that bubble with single-family detached, as well as attached, and some multifamily. Again, we're proposing a neighborhood park of somewhere around seven to eight acres at the intersection of Penrose and Sarinca. And that works very well as a setting to also do then higher-density residential attached product adjacent to it, as well as the neighborhood commercial. And I'll show a slide later on, kind of depicting that. Most of our attached product is alley-loaded, so it works very well adjacent to Collector Streets, because you're, you're fronting the property on it, but accessing it from the alley. So that, that meets the criteria for a Collector Street. It also gives a very wonderful streetscape, and you'll see that in some of the examples that I'll show in a little bit. Again, our vision for the North Place community is to create a neighborhood that's pedestrian-friendly. There will be a trail system along Penrose, Sarinca, within some other nodes of trails connecting throughout the various neighborhoods. Part of this is already under construction with the subdivision work we're doing. We're building about nine hundred feet of Penrose or Hope Avenue. As Mr. Manley said, that's still to be worked out. Secondly, we'd like to provide diverse housing opportunities, and we're doing that through both attached and detached housing, as long, as well as some amount of multifamily. We also do a product that's a cottage product, which is on smaller lots, and is alley-loaded, has a very wonderful streetscape. I actually believe Mr. Manley had an example of some of that. We'd also like to do some neighborhood commercial, which again, provides an opportunity not only for the residents living in North Place, but residents within a reasonable walking distance to utilize. And again, this can cut down on the number of vehicular trips. But more importantly, it really gives families and people living in these neighborhoods and adjacent neighborhoods the opportunity, on a beautiful evening like tonight, to walk to some small neighborhood commercial for ice cream, coffee, pizzas, sandwiches, those type of things. We're not talking large-scale commercial. The buildings are, are smaller in nature, three thousand and maybe up to four thousand with a couple of users in those spaces. And from a scale perspective, fit very well within a residential neighborhood. The other two items are parks and trails. Those are very important to us. I mentioned the seven to eight or nine-acre park. We're currently constructing a one and a quarter-acre park as part of the current subdivision. It's kind of a pocket park. We'll likely have at least one additional pocket park in this project, and possibly two. The first part of North Place, which was built across on the west side of Idaho Street, has a four-acre park. So those are the kind of amenities we plan on providing. Again, this is a Post Falls area map, and you can see in green the area, and it is identified in the comp plan as the central Prairie area, which also identifies some of the proposed uses for that type of area. This proposal is supported by many elements of the comprehensive plan. The previous map talked about the central Prairie focus area that places an emphasis on embracing a variety of housing-type land uses and maintaining quality standards and producing pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. We think this is a good location for that. A lot of work went into the comp plan, a lot of input from citizens in Post Falls, as well as the Planning Commission members, business community, and et cetera. So we believe this fits very well. It is not intended to see how much maximum density you can get out of an area. It's really to provide a diverse housing type and make a very walkable community. We also, as you can tell, we're focusing multifamily closer to Prairie Avenue and along Sarinca and Penrose. These streets are designed to support the higher density in those areas, and that's why we've laid it out the way we have. We, again, are providing provision for a variety of housing types and densities. And finally, we're focusing our commercial development along arterials and collectors, which, again, are designed to support this kind of development and, and really make it work well. This proposal helps foster many of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Policy one, support land use pattern, and that's really what we're proposing within the comp plan, is to provide slightly higher density opportunity, which helps prevent sprawl, suburban sprawl further out onto the Prairie, and do it in such a way that it doesn't impact the surrounding neighborhoods. I think the city has done a good job with the comp plan in making sure that they take careful consideration to revise zoning designation. Policy three is to encourage development patterns that are suitably scaled to daily needs within walkable neighborhoods. And what we are proposing here certainly fits that. And to ensure that adequate land is available for, for housing needs. This property has been annexed into the city since the early 2000, so it's been, utilizes as farmland for the last fifteen or so years since being annexed in to the city. And again, policy number twenty provides for higher-density development, excuse me, adjacent to arterials and Collector Streets, and we've really tried to, to focus on that. Now, I've just got a few examples. This is kind of a close-up of a townhome building that has six units in it. They are two-story in nature. Again, you, you're not seeing a garage, because these are accessed from an alley in the back. They range in size from about thirteen hundred square feet in this product type up to two thousand, and go from two-bedroom, one-bath, up to two, three-bedroom and two-bath. Again, the question was asked about the height. These, this particular product is no taller than a two-story, single-family home, so. This shows another type of product, but similar, again, attached. This gives you an idea of the elevation and the scale. And this is why it fits in really well into residential, single-family detached neighborhoods, because they're very similar in style and scale. We're not talking a massive building that's forty-five feet tall. So what we prefer to do is mix these type of buildings, four to six to eight units, into a residential neighborhood. The previous slide, if you were to be able to see the back of that, there are, there are single-family detached residential homes directly across the alley from, from that product. This is actually an example of what we have done, and this is in the city of Liberty Lake, right across the state line. So here is an example of neighborhood commercial. At the time of this picture, it was not open yet, but these areas are intended to be outdoor seating areas, and again, adjacent to open space. You can see some of the product that I've shown previously under construction. These are residential homes down here. You can see kind of right behind, again, a single-family detached residential neighborhood.
Mr. Schneidmiller, you got about, Mr. Schneidmiller, you got about forty-five seconds.
Okay. And then this is just another product type. So in conclusion, we believe this proposal is supported by the comprehensive goals and policies. The proposal is supported by the necessary arterial and Collector Street. Proposal provides the open-space trails and diversified housing type, and we respectfully request approval of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions when, if there are any.
Questions for applicant at this time? Anyone?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schneidmiller. We'll keep you here for rebuttal. Public comment, those in favor?
None.
Those neutral? Wishing to speak, remaining neutral, Samantha, is it Sturglander? If I butchered your name, I apologize.
Stigleeder.
Okay.
You have to state your name, your address, and you have four minutes.
Samantha Stigleeder, Nob Creek in Post Falls. So thank you, Commission, for allowing me to speak. I've been coming for a few weeks now to kind of observe and get an idea of what's going on. I didn't intend to speak on this issue, but I do have some questions after hearing staff present, if I may. I heard it twice today that there are no geographical features in these places that we're wishing to annex and develop, and I'm curious why we don't consider the Prairie a geographical feature. Maybe I don't understand what a geographical feature is. So perhaps that could be explained, because I personally really enjoy the beauty of the Prairie as you're driving around Cooney County. So I have that question. Two weeks ago, it was stated by a city staff member when there was a couple in here kind of talking about multifamily housing being built in their residential area down by the river, that the height for residential and the height for multifamily was the same. I think it was quoted at thirty-five feet, but today it was quoted at forty-five feet. So I'm curious if maybe we can resolve that for the people that don't speak Latin of city and zoning committee rules. And then my understanding as well was that this was a presentation purely to kind of like inform you fine people, and then also the citizen or the residents of Post Falls, whether or not these proposals meet city standards. But what I heard was a lot of advocacy for additional housing and additional development and additional multifamily housing in the city of Post Falls, which, which we are all allowed to believe what we want, but maybe I'm confused on the purpose of this time, and how we are allowed to also show our views on what that kind of building in our area does. So let's see, sorry, I like chicken-scratched out a little list here. I do appreciate all of the really great statistics, especially from places like California, Citrus Grove, like you mentioned, Sacramento. But perhaps we didn't talk about any of the other statistics from those areas, like maybe quality of life or satisfaction with living conditions. We're looking at building out places quickly, like other places that are building in the country, and we're talking about housing prices and availability of housing. But I think that there are other statistics that we could also speak about if we're going to take the time of the commission and of the citizens to speak about these issues. Perhaps we could put in two sides of the story, or just a diversity of, of statistics there. So, yeah. So just researching the negative effects of growth, like we're seeing, not just the positive effects, so that we can kind of have a better idea. And maybe we could just honestly say whether or not we like it, instead of continuing to try to just talk about traffic, which seems to be the only way that we have to say that we don't like building, is to say that there aren't enough lights, and there's too much traffic, and there's too much cars. But perhaps we could say other things. And then I did speak to some people of other cities that I know personally about building and what that looks like. And what I was maybe told was that there's also some potential positives for the city themselves, or even the, actually, I don't want to talk about that right now. But perhaps we could be more transparent about how it is monetarily positive for the city of Post Falls to continue building out, which is also not addressed in any of these statistics that were brought up. And two more things, okay, I think I can do it. There was something, Chairman, that you read today by, I think her initials were M.M., if I remember correctly. And she said, "We're not obligated to house everyone who wants to live here." And I would just like to say it again, we are not obligated to house everyone that lives here. I feel so blessed and so thankful to have moved my family up here. I love it here, but scarcity makes people appreciate things more, and we're not obligated to house everyone that wants to live here. There aren't people getting off of buses, sitting on the corner that don't have places to live. So, and then also, I would just like to say that to DeTocville, if you haven't read him, wrote a wonderful book, like what, in the eighteen hundreds, called Democracy in America. And maybe the first fifty to a hundred pages of it is all about the township, and how the township is what makes America different than the continent, and then Europe, and then England. And I am so appreciative that we can have a township, but please listen to your township. Listen to the people that are coming and saying that they don't want so much of this, because that is what keeps us strong, and that is what keeps us different, and that's what keeps us the best. So eight minutes, eight seconds, back to you.
Very nice work. Again, guys, I made it very, very clear at the beginning, and your, and your points were fantastic, and I do appreciate them. This is not a basketball game, and this is not a you against us, or them against them. We're all trying to work here together, so hold your applause. We have neutral. Do we have any against? All right. Are these in order of wishing to speak and not wishing to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Citizen Issue just says Rhonda, comments regarding city meeting. Says, "Changing new North Place construction on East Idaho Street, Penrose. I am asking for the proposal changed for the single-family dwellings to mixed-use dwellings to be denied for these reasons. At this point, there, half of the field remains, has been a source of great enjoyment for many years for people to walk, walk their dogs, take their children, and enjoy the beauty of that farmer's field. Putting in single-use dwellings allows for some of that to continue. If mixed-use is put in, there's not enough parking to be allowed for the city of Post Halls for all the three-story apartment buildings going in, as well as the deterioration of those apartment buildings over the years. I have young children who currently live in new apartment dwellings in Post Falls, and there's not enough parking for more than one car, no place for children to play, and rent is so astonishingly high that for most people, they have to be sharing of rent and even live there and have their, to have a roof over their heads. How is that promoting the welfare and the future of Post Falls? At what point is enough selling of any of the smallest fields or lots to shove in how- to shove in houses built ten feet apart or apartment buildings being built three stories high and four, uh, buildings of them being every one acre? Um, who is this promoting? Where is the room and the infrastructure for the city of Post Falls itself? Please decline this mixed-use dwelling request. Thank you." In opposition, not wishing to speak, Lisa Bignell, uh, concerns about the, concerns about illegal immigrants and liberation of Idaho, concerns about losing view of the mountains. Um, what is the benefit of the people enjoying this small town? Concerns of increased traffic noise, crime with increased population. Post Falls is turning into a big city. Will property taxes drop due to share base? Will property values drop? Um, I see both marked, so I'll look for confirmation here. Uh, but in opposition, Jeremy Curtis, do you wish to speak or no?
I'd like to speak for just a moment.
Okay, just have you, uh, come up, state your name and address, and then you have four minutes to share, sir.
Thank you. So my name is Jeremy Curtis, and my address is two nine-nine-eight North Puncher Grass Drive in Fieldstone. Um, the couple of comments that I put on the sheet there was, um, I'm kind of opposed to the high-density housing when it pertains to rental, being the fact that, and you guys have kind of touched on this, no one can afford the rent. And so those same families that get into those rental housings cannot save money to get a down payment for a future home. Um, the mixed use for the commercial is not a bad idea. I have seen that. I've lived in Colorado before. We've had some neighborhoods that have had small neighborhood businesses, and it does give you a sense of community. It does give you a place to kind of walk to and congregate and see your neighbors and have things to do, and, and that is not a bad idea. Um, one thing I did propose on my comments is, and I don't know if the city has ever looked into something like this, but, um, having a certain number of homes, single-family homes locked into, um, how much they can go up in value per year. I've actually owned a home, and then my first home was locked in like this. It used the Consumer Price Index, and whatever the Consumer Price Index went up per year is what my value of that home could go up. That allowed me to get into a home where a lot of other homes around it were, were very expensive. And then when I sold it, not only did I still make money, but it allowed that next homeowner to get into a home where, again, not all the, the homes around it were, were far more expensive. And maybe this is something the city can consider for future developments, because the, the way it was, and again, this was in Colorado, the county actually required the developer to have so many low-cost homes. And low cost does not mean cheap. They were still quality homes. They were built with the same standards as the rest of the neighborhood, but it was locked into that Consumer Price Index. And it allowed for a certain number of individuals within the city, within the county, to actually be able to afford a home. And so maybe as we look at all these different locations, just not, not just North Place, but any of these developments, maybe we can consider something like that as opposed to rentals, because then those new homeowners have something to get into, and they're not having to spend half a million dollars on a, you know, fifteen-hundred-square-foot home just because the prices are going up so much. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Christopher Larson.
Christopher Larson. I live at, uh, one oh-two-five-one West Prairie Avenue, directly to the north of this development. Um, first, um, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, and I will not knock Greenstone or any of the developers. They do a fantastic job. Um, I've seen their developments. My brother lives in one, the one in Liberty Lake, and it is a well-developed plan. My concerns is, is that, one, having the, the mixed residential with the density that's located there is a public safety. My concerns are the impacts on the fire, first responders by growth. One in hundred of every, uh, one out of every hundred of the population will call nine-one-one for EMS and fire. Around eighty percent of its calls are EMS services. KCMSS, which is our ambulance service, is a county-wide service. Those are based on the geographic locations throughout our county, and they are manned by firefighters throughout the county. Currently right now, in Post Falls, we only have two ambulances. When another call comes out, other ambulances, two out of Cortlande, one out of Rafterm, one out of Hayden. When it gets even worse, you have Spirit Lake, Timber Lake, and you have worldly ambulance that are coming to our calls. Currently right now, with the growth that we're seeing, as a first responder, as a paramedic, I have seen these delays due to high-density growth, um, the traffic delaying response and providing a service to our citizens. We need more, we need more ambulances. Yes, this does not address it, and nor does it fund it. But as the population increases, so does our call volume. KCFR in the last decade had a volume increase of their response fifty-five percent, yet as a fire district, they can only grow their budget by three percent. So now that burden is being put on the taxpayers to pay for the response, yet the fire district cannot grow without going to a bond or a levy and having a sixty-six or sixty-seven percent, uh, majority going for either a bond or a levy in the favor. Adding more, uh, dwellings increases call volume. Um, per the International City Manager recommendations, one-point-five-two firefighters are needed per thousand. Higher traffic slows response. Suburban population, five to a thousand square miles requires ten firefighters response within ten, within a ten minutes, and the needs met eighty percent of the time. That is NFPA seventeen-twenty. So in order for us to be able to meet the mission as a first responder and seeing the growth that is happening, more and more is happening is the response from other agencies and other jurisdictions have to respond as mutual aid. As we get this population growth, our call volume increases, which is now going to delay our response to our citizens. Fast-paced growth is hindering our mission of a fire and EMS by increasing calls, heavy traffic and demands on our neighboring fire districts. KFCFR can only comment on fire code. They cannot comment on the demands of growth. So that is something that is, as a fire code official, when I review developments, I can only apply the International Fire Code and IDAPA rules that are lined out by the state. So I'm not speaking on behalf of the fire department. I'm, I'm speaking out as a citizen. Close density allows increase of fire load. During wind events, it threatens the adjacent structures. Montrose, last summer, careless cigarette next to a house with vinyl siding consumed two houses, damaged a third. Problem with, and that was single-family. So when we are designing our cities and our towns, the growth of it, we got to think about our fire resistance and how are we going to have, if we're going to have that close, high-density, what kind of materials are we going to be building our homes out of? Because apartment complexes, and I, I'll use a Walmart analogy, statistically, they increase call volume. Multifamily increases our call volume. It's based on density. It's not based on the who's living in them. I have a daughter who has a family who lives in Post Falls. My wife was born and raised here.
Mr. Larson, your four minutes are up, so you go ahead and wrap up. You can, I'll go ahead and close.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your, uh, listening to me, and I just ask that, uh, I, you be opposed until we get our infrastructure in place.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, and thank you, uh, for providing data and sources. Um, I appreciate In opposition wishing to speak, Abigail Edgar. Would it be easier for some of you in the back just to kind of know that, um, Joshua Hensley, you're on deck? Okay.
Hi there. Abigail Edgar. I live at eighteen ninety-eight Dipper Loop in Post Falls. Um, and, let's see. So I'm concerned about the, the zone change to mixed residential, because currently our schools are already at capacity. Um, and the homes that you guys have approved to be built already along Greens Ferry that are zoned to go to Greens Ferry Elementary haven't even been finished being built yet. So we're at capacity. There's going to be more kids going to this school, and having this mixed, uh, residential multifamily homes is just going to add to that. Um, and, you know, school's the most important. You know, our kids are the most important. Um, you know, the other thing was, um, as the last gentleman, uh, mentioned was, you know, have you guys budgeted for the increase in police and fire and, um, city staff and the traffic calls for service? Um, let's see. Uh, what about the guidelines for, um, you know, is there going to be parking for this, uh, neighborhood commercial? I, I heard a lot about, uh, walking, um, walking to this, uh, neighborhood commercial. Um, but I mean, in the wintertime, people aren't going to want to walk to, you know, the coffee shop. They're going to want to just drive over there or whatever. Um, let's see, what else? And then a lot of other people have also touched on the traffic, you know, um, forty-one, the project on forty-one to get onto the freeway, that project isn't even started yet. So it's backed up, you know, I don't know if you guys drive that way, but it's a nightmare trying to get on the freeway, um, you know, morning or, or evening. Um, so I think that, um, you know, of course, everyone has a right to build on their property, but, um, I think it's important that, um, timing is taken into consideration and that our infrastructure is where it needs to be. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. In opposition wishing to speak, Joshua Hensley. Julie, you are next. Okay.
Joshua Hensley, thirteen sixty East Warm Springs. Um, so just kind of lay out what I see happening here. Greenstone came and got the, uh, the R-one for everything, single-family housing. Everything was great. They started building, and what did they start building? It was the smallest lots with the smallest houses that you, they could put on it. Um, I live directly to the south. It's basically two houses per what's already there. So we're not blending, matching houses or lot sizes to make the community look one cohesive thought. Now we're just cramming in as much as we can. We're making California houses for Californians that are coming here. So I just wanted to point that out. That's what they're already doing. Um, but, uh, we're in a housing crisis, right? There's, there's not enough houses for the people trying to buy them. So Greenstone didn't, uh, didn't cause that, and they're trying to maximize their profits. Don't fault them at all. I'd be doing the same thing. But I do hear from Greenstone employees that Greenstone itself is only going to release two houses onto the market per month, and that's over the three cities that they're building in. So they didn't, they didn't cause the housing crisis, but they're certainly not helping it. They're milking it for everything it's worth. So what are we doing to kind of hold them accountable for the way they're building and the way they're selling? Well, let's look at this new project here. So now what they want to do is, uh, they're, they're asking for high-density and commercial. So the city comes back and says, okay, here's your nodes, right? So we got those red circles on one of the maps there, and they're all up on Prairie, Idaho, and Greens Ferry, which makes sense. Those are roads that are designated for that kind of traffic. But then you flip to the other map on where they're actually going to put this stuff, and it's right down Saringa. If it's so important and we need it, why don't we put it out towards the roads that can handle it? Why are we cramming all of it down Saringa? Talk about your maps, too. The bottom of Saringa, the very south, we already put apartments down there. We've already put apartments on Saringa, which is what you guys call a minor collector road. It's never meant to have high-density stuff on it, and we already have apartments on the south end. So now on the north end of Saringa, we're going to cram, there's that whole bubbly chart there for what they want to build, all the commercial and all the high-density still on Saringa. Why, why cram it all on Saringa? If we, if we need it, which I don't believe we do, if we need it, why not push it out where it should be, out on Prairie, or, uh, yeah, Prairie, Idaho and Greens Ferry? I don't understand why we're, why we're doing this. I kind of thought that we're building California homes for Californians, and we're going to create traffic to make them feel welcome. Um, but if that's not the case, let's see what else we got here. I was going to talk about water. I understand that we've, we haven't actually looked into our aquifer. I think it was Ethel, they checked out their, their aquifer, and it could only support one house per five acres to keep replenishing itself. That's why they're expanding at, at a much different rate. They're doing five-acre parcels. My understanding through talking to the water district and a few other people at the city is, we haven't done that. If that's true, we need to look into that right now. We can't be Californians and wait till the problem is so big that we cannot physically go back and fix it. We, we need to be working on our, our water, too, if, if that's true. We already touched on fire. My understanding is that we haven't built a firehouse in twenty years. Um, we're not going to pass it for a bond. It's getting more conservative here in Post Falls. We don't want to be taxed anymore. We're already taxed more than Cortlande and anyone else around us. So the, the odds of us passing a, a bond, we couldn't even pass a levy at fifty percent, but now we're going to pass one at sixty-seven. It's not going to happen. Schools, we just touched on schools. Uh, I have two small kids. They're going to go to this elementary school. Uh, we're basically doubling the amount of houses that could go to it, but the school's already at four hundred-something, and it can be maxed out at five hundred. So we're going to double the amount of children that could go to the school, and it can't handle that many. So if you approve this, just the building houses in general is going to stress. If you start putting high-density, you, by choosing this, you're choosing to put my kid in a little mobile park somewhere on the grass field, because there aren't enough seats in the schools for it. So I think we do need some more infrastructure. I know we already paid for police and all that, but we need to worry about schools and fire, too, because we're not going to pass it by the bonds. Um, end of the day, these changes are being made to help Greenstone capitalize on their investment, right? When they came, they, they wanted single-family housing. It's fine. I don't think there was much, much, uh, fight, pushback against it, because single-family housing is what people want. Now they're switching it because the market came up. They want to make some more money. Again, no, no disrespect, sir. I would be doing the exact same thing, but it's the city's job to kind of keep them in check.
Your four minutes are up, so go ahead and wrap up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so basically, um, it's the city's job to worry about the, the future of Post Falls, right? We shouldn't be making a lot of permanent decisions with, with apartments and super-high-density and small homes, because that's the retirees who are moving here from California. We shouldn't permanently alter Post Falls for the temporary thing that we're in right now. As the income rises in Post Falls and is catching the, the American standard, we saw on that, that cute little graph, um, we're going to be able to afford more. All the, all the Post Falls people will be able to afford the housing that's up here. So we shouldn't permanently alter just because of this moment in time, because past that, it's just going to do us a lot of harm. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Julie Hensley?
Hi.
I see the same address, but I'll have you state your name and address one more time.
All right. It's Julie Hensley, thirteen sixty East Warm Springs in Post Falls. I'm here today to ask that you do not grant the change from R-one to R-m zoning, because Greenstone's current plans go against approval criteria and do not reflect the goals of Post Falls comprehensive plan. This changes against the approval criteria. Amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. According to the future land use map, there should be commercial nodes along Prairie Avenue, and the rest is R-one zoning. The drafted North Place East Zone Change Map does not reflect these necessary infrastructures of commercial buildings in this area. Commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically signed along streets with higher volume, road classifications. Currently, they are asking for neighborhood commercial and high-density homes along Saringa. According to the comprehensive plan, Saringa is a minor collector road. It is meant to only hold fifteen hundred to five thousand vehicles per day. Another thing missing from that map is those high-density homes on Saringa and Pole Line. Adding the high-density homes and neighborhood commercial to this area will put undue stress on Saringa. This zone change also goes against that the developer has adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of cost. Currently, the fire department is asking for fourteen-point-nine-million-dollar bond. That result, as a result of the population growth of a hundred-and-eighteen percent. They said they haven't had anything passed in the last twenty years. The population for the comprehensive plan is projecting that the community will grow from its current thirty-nine thousand to a hundred-and-five-thousand in the next twenty years. Who is going to assist in making sure we have proper resources for this growth? According to the Cooney County firefighters, they believe strongly that growth should pay for growth. They go on to state that per Idaho state law, they rely on Cooney County and cities like Post Falls to collect impact fees on our district. We, they said they attempted to have them collect impact fees, but they've been unsuccessful. In March, the city increased, uh, in- In March, the city increased impact fees for the police and parks, but have ignored the fire department's plea for impact fees and have also not put place in funds for our schools. I am very concerned for our future generation's education here as well. Greens Ferry Elementary already has 421 students this year and has a max capacity of 500 students. Because of COVID, the district has 200 known students not enrolled this year and cannot determine the percentage of growth. The boundary map for Greens Ferry Elementary School currently supports 1,300 homes. This board has already approved 141 high-density homes in Crown Point, 140 homes have been approved for this North Place East, Hayden Homes Development has 120 homes off of Kildare, and there's also the hallmark homes along Greens Ferry. These are all a part of Greens Ferry Elementary School and are going to have a large impact on increasing the number of students. According to the city's projected population growth map, there's an estimated 11,000 to 27,000 more homes that are going to impact this small area. Where are the students going to go? The city of Post Falls couldn't even get a levy passed that requires 50% support of the community for schools, and yet they expect multiple bonds to be passed at 66.23% vote to get these schools built. The residents are already saying no to levies and bonds. We are not making sure the future development is supporting the necessary infrastructure needed to support the population growth. Lewiston could not get a bond passed for 20 years, making children go to school in unsafe conditions for that long. How are we going to support our future children and those seeking medical attention if we do not impose necessary fees onto the developer and keep allowing for increased number of homes per acre? I have heard at past meetings that we need more homes built, and we do not currently have enough high-density homes. The city has already approved 377 acres to R3 and R2 zoning that could result in over 7,500 high-to-medium-density homes compared to the possibility of 16,000 homes approved for R1. So, to say we do not have enough is only because they haven't built, not because we haven't allocated this space already. We have to stop protecting these builders. Having higher-density homes and not supporting commercial infrastructure is hindering our communities. Having RM zoning does not require the builder to place commercial buildings, but instead gives them the option to do so. Their draft plans already show that they might or might not put in these infrastructures along inappropriate minor collector roads, instead of the more logical locations along Prairie, which is actually designated for that type of traffic volume.
Your four minutes is up, so I'm going to have you wrap up whatever.
Yes, the community realizes that we are growing community, but we need to be smart in protecting our community by ensuring that schools, police, fire, EMS, and proper medical services are in place to care for our community. The builders need to be accountable to ensuring the proper infrastructure is placing these cities and not putting the burden on its residents. Rezoning from R1 to RM is putting unnecessary stress to the current infrastructure, and their draft plan disregards Post Falls comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Also in opposition wishing to speak is John Hoteen? Yes, sir.
I was curious about if we-
Need you to come up to the mic and state your name and your address, and you have four minutes, we need that so that it's recorded.
So, my name is John Hoteen, I live at 740 East Tiger Avenue, which is directly across from the proposed multifamily housing. I was hoping maybe we could, can we put that map up where they showed the sections?
Yeah.
Almost the same as this, but bigger. Almost the same as the one there, but you had one that was bigger.
That one you're looking for?
No. Yeah, it's close enough. This one's fine. So, this section right here where they have the line along Idaho Street, my house is directly across the street from that. They're going to put those homes directly across when we've had for the last 20 years a field, where we got to watch sunrises in the morning, we enjoyed being rural, we enjoyed being out further from town, away from the high-density. In fact, that's part of the reason we moved out that direction, because we wanted to be away from downtown. The other thing is, it's not that far to run to Walmart, we do it several times a day. I don't, he was saying it was a mile or something down to Fred Meyer, I mean, down to Super Y, it's not that far. For them to put a store in there, I used to live over in Hayden in Strawberry Fields, and they put a little commercial area like that on the corner of Prairie and Atlas. And you know what that turned into? An Idaho State Liquor Store, a convenience store that just sold cigarettes, beer, and lottery tickets, did not contribute anything to the community as far as I'm concerned, and there was a little gymnasium that struggled for a while to try to keep a gym in the other section of that. I'm not saying that that's what's going to go in there, but what happens is, when businesses struggle and they can't fill the occupancy for it, whatever can move in there will move in there. The other thing is, I got a lot of things to say. I didn't bring a pen, and I should have made some notes from the former speaker when they were talking about no topography, there's a huge hill that comes down Prairie and Idaho, both of those streets come down to a pretty sharp hill. In fact, I avoid it in the winter because it's easy to slide down that intersection. It is really hard to get across or out or either direction on that street, not to mention the railroad tracks that go across there when there's a train and it's backed up traffic halfway up the hill. Now, the county's noticed that this traffic is an issue because they put up a sign that tells you you're going too fast, because they have people that speed down this hill, they pick up speed as they come down the hill. I've seen several accidents since I've lived there, I've been there about six years. I know that they're saying that Prairie is designed to hold this amount of traffic, but I don't know necessarily that Idaho Street is. I know that it has more lanes down to the south, but as you come to the north, it narrows down quite a bit, and I've noticed that people tend to pick up more speed the further they get away from town. They feel like, oh, I'm less likely to be pulled over because I'm way out here. Unfortunately, we have people that pull onto my street that don't slow down more than maybe five miles an hour after going 45 or 50 down Idaho Street. Also, I have to ask each one of you, if you could imagine where you live at your house, you chose this house, if they said, hey, we're going to build apartments directly across the street from where you live. I'm just saying, as a homeowner, that's not what anyone wants. I understand what they're trying to do, and I also, on top of all of what they're saying as far as schools. He mentioned real quick about people couldn't afford to buy homes here. Who could afford to pay $1,400 a month for an apartment that you don't even own, you're not even getting any equity out of? A lot of people who are moving up here from California are bringing their equity and paying nearly cash for the homes that they buy. They're not concerned about how much their payments are going to be a month. If they think that building these apartments and offering opportunities for kids at the low end of a studio for $800 or $900 a month, and then the wages that he shows that we make in Idaho, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't match. He also showed the amount of wages that they pay in Washington. I'd say a majority of people who are trying to live here in Post Falls and trying to earn a living can't do it here or in Coeur d'Alene, so they commute to Washington. A lot of people work in the Spokane Valley, if you've ever driven back at 5:00 from Spokane Valley, it's 25, 30 miles an hour the whole way back. So, because of that, people avoid I-90 and come down Highway 53, which also, they end up dumping in this side of town. So, now you have all those Crown Point apartments over there, you have all these other things, I'm sorry, I'm done.
You're good, you actually just hit the four-minute mark, but no, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I just started getting too upset.
Also in opposition wishing to speak, Donald Schaefer.
My name's Donald Schaefer, live at 1074 East Stony Brook Loop, Post Falls, and that housing is in the housing development just south of there. The other gentleman spoke, he lives a block north of where I live. And, I'm going to speak with the first person that talked about the quality of life, and that's one of the things that I look at, is the quality of life. And I see where you have the center of that development, which was supposed to be R1 to begin with, now it's being a commercial area, I don't need to walk to a commercial area. I walk all the time, my wife and I both walk all the paths and stuff around there, we go to parks and things like that. We don't need a commercial development, I would agree with the one gentleman saying, what happens when you have vacancies? What moves in there? Maybe nothing, maybe there's going to be something you don't want to move in there. And having all that high-density, I moved into the neighborhood that I moved into because it was single-family. I really don't want to see the development going around like that, because I've lived it, I don't like it. It's really not a quality form of life. High-density where you've got townhome after townhome, and they turn into just, it's a turnover, rental after rental after rental, you never know who's going to be in there. You've got a lot of street parking, I don't care if they have garages, they don't use their garages, they put them on the street. And if you don't have the infrastructure for the streets, where are they going to park? And, one gentleman talking about the traffic patterns there. I agree, you go down Idaho Street to Prairie, what's going to happen with that intersection? It's very difficult to get across there when you see people coming flying off that hill, and you want to go across and continue on Idaho, sometimes it's really tough, and then you've got the train, obviously. And, the first person that spoke talked about having, we do not have to house everybody that comes here. So, if we're trying to do that, we're going to have, from Rathrum to here to Post Falls, it's going to be nothing but a solid mass of houses, if we try to do that. And people live out in the kind of the rural area, they don't want to live in the city, but they don't want to be too far away either, so they live in these single-family developments. I am against having a commercial development within the middle of that, especially when it's going to go down Seringa, which was already brought up, that that's not a high-volume street. I cross that street several times a day, and right now, they're opening that up to go to north. And, you're going to have traffic not only coming off of that, the way that map shows, you've got, Seringa is going up, looks like it goes up to Prairie Road. So, you're going to have Prairie Road coming down through that neighborhood, the new neighborhood, down into our Fieldstone Development, down to where the apartments are. So, and then they're going to go back and forth both directions, they'll go from the apartment complex, which is already high-density, go north. So, you're going to see a high-traffic pattern going through there. You can walk it, yes, but I don't see having commercial development in the middle of a neighborhood. I oppose it.
All right, thank you very much. In opposition wishing to speak, Mr. Schlenker, come on up.
Harlan Schlenker, 2570 Ashrath Court. I don't know that my notes are going to do me any good, a lot of the citizens spoke on a lot of the concerns that I have. I will hit on a few. Number one would be Prairie Avenue infrastructure. It's already overwhelmed with Crown Point being put in there and what have you. It's a horrible road to begin with. I think I would ask that you consider not giving this request approval, keep it to the R1. Hopefully, eventually Prairie Avenue will be, it'll probably end up being four lanes. Until that happens, I think R1 is the good solution. It's been R1 for years, and it seems to be a common theme that happens with developers. They'll buy a property that's zoned for one thing, and then they want to change for something else. Next thing is the police and fire. I do understand that they're not allowed to comment on anything outside of code, but I think we all realize that the efficiency of the police department, the fire department, has been lost in recent years. It's not what it used to be. And, I think we all need to look at that seriously, because it is a quality of life and health-safety measure. Street services. Two years ago, my street was swept twice a month. I hadn't seen them, but one time last year, this year, I called the street department and was told that, oh, well, now they're only going to do it once a month because they don't have the equipment and the manpower to keep up with all the new streets. So, I'm just wondering, am I going to get a tax rebate on that for losing services? I don't think so, and that's not the way it's supposed to be. Affordable housing, that, if it did come up tonight, I missed it, but I'd like to see when these developers are asking for multi-level or high-density homes, what their prices are going to be. And, I know they're not going to be able to tell us, because right now, with the rising cost in building materials, is, you know, that'd be a projection that no one would want to make. The single-family attached. I think most of the citizens that live in that particular area are correct when they're saying, you know, it was R1, single-family, and, you know, that's the way it should remain. It's not so much as everyone says, you know, we need more homes, we need more houses. If we do, let's develop them someplace else. If it's going to be in the Prairie, put it over there on, off the 53. You know, I mean, I don't think these citizens should be impeded with apartments or condos, townhouses, whatever you wish to call them. Another citizen hit on the schools, we already know that schools are overwhelmed. I believe it's next week, we get to vote again on a levy. I don't see it passing just solely because the majority of the citizens in Post Falls are unhappy right now, and they want to see some answers, and I understand, this is maybe not the place to talk about all of it, we need to take that to city council. And, I appreciate your time, and for volunteering especially. And hopefully, no more five-and-a-half-hour meetings.
Thank you, sir. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Daniel Murphy. Followed by Melissa Devine? Okay.
Thank you, Daniel Murphy, 1985, East Warm Springs. Much like everybody else in here, we live right there, it's obviously going to affect us. We are fortunate enough to be able to have a great view right now, right over that corridor section that is not intended to be changed immediately or being built on right now. And we get a great view of Rathrum Mountain, which many people do, why we're here, is to try to preserve why we moved there. So, I asked, I mean, right now, why the change? I mean, I'd like to have them answer that question, why the change? It's been originally for single-family, that's why many of us bought there, why we all live there, so why the change? They were okay with it the way that it was. So, it's a big question, why? I mean, we've explored everything else, we've talked about how it's going to affect the schools and everything else, which everybody's done a great job at, but the big question is, is why? Are we jumping just because it's a bubble right now and this is what we're told to do? I mean, no, we don't act like that, we are more calm, and we're going to reflect, to respond, not just react to a situation. I mean, maybe why not do something totally different and ask for this to be considered a geofeature and leave it as some kind of a historical field, preserve it the way that it is? We could go to the other extreme, right? No, we're not asking for that, many of us would like that, but we're also realistic. It was intended to be single-family, that's what we all bought into, that's what we support, so why the change? I haven't found any reason or heard anything that's good enough reason to change it. And in fact, one real important thing that we've all overlooked here is, we're pretty lucky here, this is unique, Post Falls. I grew up here, it's been since the 80s I lived here, lived up by Spirit Lake and Athol. Where's Post Falls, the city? Where is it? We don't really have one, do we? Yet, this is going to become the largest area in North Idaho, we're going to outpace Coeur d'Alene, look at right over here. Look at right over here, we've had all kinds of ideas. Why not take all these great ideas you guys have, and apply it where people actually want it, and where we actually need it? I mean, again, why put it somewhere where most people don't want it? We already decided this should be single-family. Why are we coming here and wasting everybody's time and energy to change something that we already agreed on one time? Why not go where we already want it? We have a unique opportunity to build a city. Let's do that right where everybody wants it. Not asking to go and meddle with an area, it's already been predetermined. So, I enjoy, you know, what we all have here, we all do. We don't have to cater, as people have said, to, we have to provide all this housing for everybody that's moving in. No, I think we can sit here and, and plan. I mean, that's not what we should be doing, is looking at the future. We've talked about all these issues that we don't have answers to. Water, sewer, roads, schools, you mean, you name it. So I think, right now, we should probably take a break and say, we've got what it is, that's what we're gonna work with, there's no sense in changing it right now. Let's look at it and see, why do we even need to change it? And work on these other areas that are wide open, ready for that change, inviting it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lastly, in opposition wishing to speak, Melissa Devine.
Hi, my name is Melissa Devine, and I reside at, um, 3192 Thrush Drive in Post Falls. So, like they said, many of these points have been hit, but, um, a big one is, um, for me, uh, I have, uh, three girls, and, um, schools. The schools is a big thing for me, and our, our children, um, and their future education. And they're not being met. And there's, uh, right now, if you're on Greens Ferry, there's another development going in, so say if that's as big as the, this development that is supposed to be all of Rath- or as much as Rathrum going in there, now we have those, and how many schools are we providing for these children? We not only have that, we have one high school, one high school, two middle schools. And the, and the, and the elementary schools are getting surpassed. Not only that, the, the quality of roads in these areas are not sufficient. Parking is all along, people are parking all along, the, the, even the schools don't have enough parking spaces to provide people to do pickups, where people are con- constantly going and driving through, and doing, they're doing drive-through pickups now, because of it, because there's not enough places for us to actually park to go and pick up our children. What happened to actually just parking your car and going to pick up your child from, from school? Um, a lot of these things are getting lost, um, in, and I understand there's growth, and we have to move forward. And, um, but what do we want our children to move forward to? There's, uh, there's not, there's not, another problem is, yes, there's a lot of people coming in, and I understand there's growth, and people are gonna come in, but the problem is, where, where, they're, they're buil- they're building only houses. What are they bring, are they bringing businesses? Are they, are they, are we creating more businesses in this area? Or are we just bringing in more housing? We can only sustain so much housing, and yes, we might have a growth spurt right now, and if we add in those, those, um, those apartment buildings or duplexes or whatnot, how long is, how long, we, we, we hit this right now, and we hit it hard, and there's a growth, but what happens afterwards? I mean, we saw cons- we, we, we've seen before, in, um, for example, in California, where up the property taxes, um, went so high, to the point that people weren't able to keep their homes because their property taxes were so high. At what point is enough enough? And the thing is, is that area is sufficient, it's with one, with one, um, with single-family homes, it's sufficient, it doesn't need to have multiple. And if we're bringing multiple, we don't have to ha- we don't have to house everybody. And it's not our job to. Another, why, why are people, why are people coming to Idaho? Why is this such a desirable place? This has had a huge growth spurt, and the, and one of the reasons, I believe, is because of the beauty of Idaho, the prairie that is there right now. Yes, I know it's getting developed, but to which point? I mean, are, are those people gonna be able to look out their window and actually see across to Rathrum Mountain? Or are they, are they gonna be, um, not have that privilege? You know, there's plenty of other out, uh, other areas outside. I know Athol's developing in Spirit Lake as well, um, but, I mean, those are ten-acre parcels, and here we are, trying to take not even how many acres? And, and, and in that area, we're putting twenty perc- twenty percent, that's fifty-three acres of multifamily houses. That's a lot. Another thing is, um, putting alleyways, where alleys in the back of the things, that makes our crime rate, crime, crime rate grow, grow too, as well. Another thing for my children, I want them to be able to walk down the streets and walk to, be able to walk to the school, and not be afraid of something, you know, or something's going to happen to them on the way. I want them to feel safe enough to be able to do that. Um, I don't know if you've been down Prairie lately, but it is very packed, um, with the road construction, and if we're widening it, widening it now, just to sub- um, subdue all the growth that is happening currently, how many mo- how much are we gonna have to do that again? And just for me to go to, from here to Coeur d'Alene, you're sitting in, in, in traffic on Prairie, Prairie's closed down, Hayden's closed down, um, how many more roads are gonna have to get closed down in order to make these sufficient? And is it gonna be even sufficient, because it's so close to the highway? Sorry, time's up.
You're good.
Um, thank you for your time, and, um, I hope you're taking into consideration, I do oppose.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anything else? Okay?
I just wanna point out briefly, uh, some of the comments borderlined on, um, certainly with the last one with crime rate, and, um, trying to, um, analogize what certain types of development, uh, bring are kind of out of order, or are out of order and shouldn't be considered, um, as far as those people moving into certain different types of housing. So, just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate the legal counsel. I know there's a few things that I wanna be able to go over, but, uh, before we do that, we need to, uh, turn it over to Mr. Schneider for rebuttal. Is he still on with us?
He is.
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll be brief, uh, I will not try to address every question or comment that was made, just, uh, a few that I wanted to highlight. First, to be very clear, that both Idaho Street and Prairie Avenue, uh, the half of the street adjacent to the property will be improved, um, that, that's a requirement of the city. You'll see that happening with the subdivision that's taking place, uh, over the next couple months. So the, the section of Idaho will look like it does adjacent to Fieldstone, all the way to Prairie Avenue. And Prairie Avenue, the southern half will be improved, uh, to the specifications of, of the city. One gentleman asked why the change. The reason for the change is to, again, provide a diversity of housing types. We likely would've proposed this back when the city would, when the property was annexed in, this zone did not exist. So R1 was the zone that was, uh, most applicable at the time. Uh, again, we believe that based on the comprehensive plan, uh, other city, uh, code and ordinances, this is a very reasonable request, uh, and, and should be strongly considered in favor of. Again, uh, Seringa, as a minor collector, as folks have stated, um, uh, Penrose or Hope is a principal collector, and Idaho's a minor arterial, and Prairie is a principal, uh, arterial, are sufficient in capacity to, uh, meet what is being proposed. Housing types, uh, again, uh, we're bui- building single-family residential homes on a variety of lot sizes, uh, and, and think that's very appropriate. All parking that would be necessary and required will be determined at the time of development, and we, as a developer, will have to meet all city requirements, uh, that are found in both co- code and ordinances. So we, we, uh, fully understand that all those requirements must be met. Nobody supports schools more than we do as a developer, and someone that's lived in, uh, Post Falls for almost forty years, uh, perfectly understand, uh, the, the need and importance of schools. And then, uh, finally, um, we, uh, are willing to consider, uh, there seems to be a lot of question about density, about a lot of high-density multifi- multifamily, and, uh, to help, uh, that situation, we are willing to commit to a cap of, uh, density, uh, in this project, and, uh, would, would be willing to consider something along those lines. So, with that, I will close. Again, we appreciate, uh, the time of the planning commission, and believe that based on the comprehensive plan and code and ordinances, this is a very reasonable request, and should be strongly considered. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Now's the time to ask. None?
If you don't mind, I could take some time, there are some questions raised, I think they would like to hear from staff.
I was gonna say, I have notes, I know that there were some questions, yeah.
So if I can, I'll go up there and try to use that screen as much as I can.
While, while you're walking over there, by all means, go ahead. I want to address the geographical feature, because growing up on a thirteen-hundred-acre Wheaton Marley Farm, I know that fields are very much a geographical feature, and we're referring to mountains, canyons, a variety of other things. So, please don't think that the city is negating the fact, the beauty of the prairie, it's just more specific in that area.
One comment regarding open space, um, and preservation of open space, and I'm not disregarding concerns by any means that was pro- brought up, but I just wanna bring up to the, the attention, we do have the, the significant land that's been purchased by the city of Post Falls for land application. It's not to be developed ever, this is for growing more than likely popular trees or some sort of vegetative matter to deal with the wastewater treatment. So that's what these lands are for, uh, not this one, that one the developer has purchased. But you see a parcel there, um, Rathrum currently has, I don't have the exact numbers, I think it's, Bill, do you know the total acreage of the land app? I think it's somewhere right around eight or nine hundred acres, summing it all up. And you have, this is owned by, I'll turn the area on too. You think where, does it have it highlighted? Yeah, so here's the, this was an anna- yeah, this right here is the land app for Post Falls that we own, and Rathrum has an adjoining piece, it's collectively, this whole bit of land is to be, uh, preserved for open space.
Did you say the collective piece is almost nine hundred acres?
I believe, I mean, if someone wanted to, they could shoot me an email, or I could inquire, I mean, I could, um, get anybody the actual sum of this. Also, recently, the community forest was purchased south of the river by the city, you see that in red, and it's adjoining, it's Camilleland Park. So, there has been some investments by the city for not only treating wastewater, but also creating open space. Building heights, I believe on the screen, there used to be a bulk and placement table on here, if I could find it. I don't see it, but I will go to the code to pull that up. So here's the bulk and placement table, you see here that the, for the R3, depending on the product type, and I'll go to the RM after this, but the R3, you have for other MF, which is your, the walk-up apartments, three-story, forty-five feet, but if you do a townhome, it's thirty-five feet as a max height, so there is a difference in height depending on the product, and you have the R3 duplex at thirty-five feet, which is, you go to the single-family, thirty-five feet as well. So, um, the other, the walk-up apartments is the one outlier there. And then going to, um, the reason why I'm doing this is just to, there's a lot of information that's been relayed that's not necessarily correct for what our code says, or what we've
It's a, it's a, it's a little bit like a, a court case in the sense of, an individual comes up and, and shares, then the applicant comes up and shares, everyone comes up and is then, uh, giving their opinion, then the applicant has the opportunity for rebuttal, and now it's time for us to be able to deliberate, so unfortunately, after you've used your four minutes, or are you just saying, it's too hot in here? 'Cause I heard somebody say it's hot in here, huh? Okay. You might catch a staff afterwards, they might be able to give it to you.
Also in the residential mix, you can see here, there, the limitations, the twenty percent, ten percent in code, you can see the maximum heights, duplex, twin homes, and single-family thirty-five feet, all other structures at, um, the, uh, forty-five street feet. That's kinda consistent to the land use table. The other item was, um, advocacy for housing. My role here, um, one of my roles here, um, as the planning manager, is also to always consider fair housing, and so, and diversified housing, that's kinda what I'm chartered to by fair housing. And so, the residential mix, the reason why I belabor a little bit, that was a significant public process that was, um, sought out, both as part of the comp plan and as part of the zoning district that was recently adopted, to hopefully address that matter. Um, there's also a statement that, uh, staff's not obligated to house, to facilitate, um, we agree, we don't feel like we could facilitate that more than, you know, that's, I mean, it'd be great if we could, but, um, same token, you know, like I said, the fair housing element, and also, when you're displacing historic residents, where you're, you've invested in here, and you can no longer sell your house and buy into your community, so then your kids can no longer be here, nor can you, so then you get displaced because of the economics. So once again, diversifying the housing helps kind of address that matter.
Since we have you up here, do you wanna address the, what exactly is taking place tonight? I think there was some confusion as far as, I think we need to make sure and explain, this piece is already zoned R1, but it is a zone change, maybe explain that process?
Yes, thank you. So, with the zone change, this is just a recommendation here before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that goes to city council. The ultimate decision is at city council, and that's where they'll weigh all these options with, uh, what's been proposed, and with what's been brought up. The topology issue that was brought up, um, I apologize that there was an item that staff is aware of, that on the northwest corner, that there is some topology matters. Mentally, I connect that to a future roundabout proposal that's gonna go on, and it does provide some implications on that, that Bill potentially could comment on that, that hillside and considerations they are. My lens, all my comment was dealing with the top part, and the fact that the plan wasn't to have and encourage access over that hillside, so more or less wasn't commented on accordingly. And to just clarify that, within that neighborhood commercial element in our code, we get a permitted land use table that kinda says what can or can't, it's not a big box commercial zone or destiny, it's, the uses allowed are those that generally support neighborhood activities. So, that's all I have to address some of those concerns that were brought up.
Mr. Manley, I have a quick question for you. Are there open space requirements in the residential mix zone?
There is, yes, not in the R1 though.
Okay.
So they don't have to build a park in the R1.
But, but they would in residential mix?
Yeah, seven percent of the gross land area, they gotta dedicate to open space.
They gotta take seven percent of two-hundred-and-sixty-six acres and put it into a park?
Or linear cor- or linear open space, or other, um, open space amenities that have to, they have to meet open space, definition for open space within code.
And so, as, in today's zone, they wouldn't have to do that?
No.
Other questions for staff while we have them up here?
Uh, let's see, where can I start?
If it's transportation, just let me know, so I can just grab Bill.
Yeah, it will be.
Yeah, don't go far, Bill.
You can start with transportation.
Chairman, commissioners, did you want me to speak in general relative to transportation, or did you have some specific questions?
I had specific questions, but if you had anything off the top of your head, I think would be- would be applicable.
I was gonna say, why don't we start specific and work our way out?
So, you know, looking at the project relative to transportation, it does fit relative to our transportation master plan. The land uses, the zoning that is proposed fits relative to our, the city's long-range transportation master plan. We're looking out 20-plus years in our master planning for it. When you look at this general development, it is surrounded by arterials, Idaho streets and arterial. They'll be developing the frontage improvement along there, providing widening, curbing, sidewalks, multi-use trails, lighting. All of those elements make a roadway safer for pedestrians and transportation. The same thing with Prairie Avenue. Greens Ferry, while not adjacent to this project, is also an arterial that we've recently have had a traffic signal that's been installed to that, at that intersection of Greens Ferry and Prairie. The Post Falls Highway District has a roundabout planned over the next two years. They're originally looking at doing it this year, they're thinking of delaying it next year because the city has one also planned along Prairie Avenue. So either this summer or next summer, you're going to see roundabouts constructed, one at the intersection of Prairie and Idaho and one at the intersection of Prairie and Spokane Street. That'll help control traffic. Roundabouts also help slow down traffic speeds dramatically along there. So those two major intersections will be improved. When we talk about access along there, regionally, the local KMPO has looked at Prairie Avenue and to preserve capacity along there, trying to limit the number of accesses along Prairie. And you'll see the same thing along Idaho. So you won't see an individual business or an individual residence provide direct access to Prairie Avenue or to Idaho Street. They will access to Seringa, which is a collector, and that will then carry the traffic to either the major collectors. It'll go east or west or north-south. So that is the only connection you'll see across this whole development is the one specifically at Seringa. Initially, that intersection is proposed to be designed as a full access. You know, uncontrolled, there won't be a signal or a roundabout. If we begin to see issues with that, we probably would limit it to like a three-quarter turn movement, where the lefts out aren't allowed, you have right in, right out, left in, to try to minimize those movements at that. And then, you know, long-term, maybe we would have to look at some form of traffic control device, you know, 20 years out with development. So that's kind of big picture, looking at where we are traffic-wise and what's going on in that situation there. Is there?
No, your questions.
Did I answer your question in that or are there specifics?
Yeah, that actually, that was gonna be my question, the Seringa intersection. I was aware, I actually live in that section of town, so I was aware of Spokane and Prairie and the improvements that will be on in Prairie and the roundabout there. And then my question was gonna be about the Idaho, because there is a hill there and how you, how that'll be developed is beyond me.
Yeah. Like I said, the district and the city are trying to coordinate those so we're not, one of us isn't detouring into the other through a construction project, which does happen sometimes. So we're trying to coordinate those really closely together with construction.
That makes sense. As far as development, you know, there were some concerns about Seringa and the amount of traffic on that. Is there any studies that have been done to say, okay, say this is fully developed as R1 versus the residential mixed? How much different in traffic volume would that create for that area? Is there any way to even estimate that?
Yeah, there is. We really didn't go in and look and compare the, a difference from it. We just took a look at our master transportation plan that we use as our guiding document and said that the volumes within there seemed to comply well with the RM mixed zone and what the developer was proposing. So that was, that was how we handled it like that. We didn't go in and do an individual traffic study to analyze the two. We said, yeah, the volumes from here do comply with the RM.
You're basically going in and say, this is so many trips and cars in R1, now let's compare it to what we have already listed as residential mix and commercial neighborhood.
Yeah, the background growth rates from this project comply well with the RM mixed use.
Oh, here we go. And this is probably for John. There was a comment about businesses not coming in here and, you know, obviously, we've been approving businesses and residential. Can you give an idea of how many business zonings that we've approved over the recent months that are coming and in development versus housing?
Well, I was told, just I think today or yesterday, that we're at site plan, commercial site plan review 17. Typically, we do about 20 to 22 in a year. So at this pace, we are doing, we're a little ahead of the schedule. I think something that are inhibiting it, that was kind of brought up before, is Highway 41. A lot of commercial, like, was brought up. They're not gonna want to open up their door and then close it or for, because of access. So they're gonna do their investments and they're gonna time the commercial at 41 accordingly there. So those are kind of some paused opportunities at that site. And then we're getting some interest out on the West Post Falls. So that's kind of where we're at with this commercial site plans.
Sure, that makes sense. And then the other thing I wanted to kind of comment on is, you know, impact fees and how those work. There's been a lot of stuff around school fees or, you know, can we do school impact fees? Can we do fire impact? Is there any, can you touch on some of that and tell, like, the differences, obviously, the police is the city, fire is the county, and how that kind of mixes and how it actually works?
Yeah, they are different taxing districts. I think I'm gonna punt to Field on this to address the taxing districts and how that works.
The, so schools aren't listed as one of the entities that can collect impact fees. There's some, you know, push in the legislature to change that, that comes around each year. With the fire district, it's largely controlled by the county. And so anything like that, they would have to go through the county process to assess those impact fees and collect those impact fees. We do have public safety in our impact fees and collect for police, so.
If fire impact fees were to ever adopt, we would be collecting fees and then coordinating that effort.
Yeah. And my understanding and watching the city council meetings, there's talks. I know Mr. Mayor has talked about it a couple times, that he's been, they've been approaching, you know, sometime soon, there might be something. So we'll see how that develops. But thanks for that clarification, though. That's all I have.
Since we're playing a game of catch, is Mr. Steinmiller still available? Do we know?
He is.
There he is. Mr. Steinmiller, one thing that you did not touch on that I would like to just try to get a question. In our report on page 120, it says phasing, the construction of this project is planned for multiple phases over a 10- to 15-year period. So rather than it being a 12- to 24-month process for this entire piece to be built out, you're saying it's a 10- to 15-year. Has that timetable changed or I just wanted to get your thoughts on that?
Sure. That is based on our historical knowledge of development that we've done over the last 30 to 35 years. Certainly, this is a process that has its peaks and valleys, and we expect that to continue to be the case. So we believe even in today's market, it would take 10 years to 12 years. If we went into a significant slowdown, we could see it stretch out between 15 and 20 years. We've experienced that with master plan communities in Post Falls as well as Coeur d'Alene and Eastern Washington. So we do believe that. The one thing with the mixed use zone, what it allows is to do, because you're doing a variety of product type, and I mentioned in my presentation, a empty nester, retirement type of neighborhood, that would likely be happening in conjunction with, with single-family type of growth. So 10 to 12 years is a reasonable timeframe. It's highly unlikely it would go faster than that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have one other question. Do you have any idea, I know this is really kind of a, it just depends a lot in the RM zone, but do you have any idea about what the max number of units could be there? Like, if it's an R1, I figured it, 240 acres, you could have about a max of 1,200 units.
I did not look at that specific analysis. I don't know maybe if the applicant did, but I didn't.
Okay. Does the applicant have any idea?
I think your analysis of the R1 zone is pretty accurate. Again, because of the allowed multifamily in the RM zone, you're gonna be somewhat higher than that. Again, you're gonna be, you're not going to turn this into even the 20% that's allowed in multifamily. So I think you might get up to 1,400, 1,450 units, kind of the way we've proposed it in the bubble map. You know, again, along Idaho Street where we're showing multifamily. And keep in mind, we did this as an example and exhibit, so you would know everything that might be considered. But that, if any was to go into the age-restricted area, it might be 20, 25 units. And that's going to count against the 20%. We would never, in any of our communities, do anything approaching the allowable 20%. So I think 250 units above what you might be able to do in single-family is reasonable to consider and think.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And the willingness to work on a density cap as well, you had mentioned that.
Yes, I'd be willing to consider that.
Any other questions? For Field, John, Bill, Mr. Steinmiller?
I have a quick one for Bill. So this is probably more for the education of, or the edification of everyone out there. So when we do, as a city, when we do projects like the roundabout, the future, this coming roundabout at Idaho and Prairie and other improvement projects, is the funding source for that a lot out, or somewhat out of impact fees?
The majority of those are out of impact fees. So the one that, the one that's being done at Idaho Street is supposed to be a highway district project. But if you're, the one at Spokane, because a lot of that was county and on the north end. When you look at the Spokane Street, that intersection, that is done out of impact fees. So that's, if you were to look at the majority of capacity improvements that we have within the city, intersection improvements, all those are done by impact fees. So every development in the city collectively pays into a pool essentially that goes towards a list of capital projects that we have over the next 20 years. So we develop a capital improvement plan that costs so much money. We have projected trips. And then there's a cost per trip that is assigned for every development that comes in. And then that's how we collect, generally collect the dollars for the majority of those improvements. Most of the frontage improvements and road widening, that is done with development at the time, as we're seeing here with Idaho Street and Prairie Avenue.
Okay. So in addition to the developer building out, or widening Prairie Avenue and Idaho Street, they have to pay impact fees. How much are those impact fees? Do you, off the top of your head, how much is a traffic impact fee? I can't remember what it was, but it's...
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not real sure either, if I had.
Is it 1,200? I thought it was around 1,200 a unit, right?
No, no, I think the, the impact fees are closer to the 4, 3,500 to 4,000 per unit, the overall impact.
Just for transportation, by I think.
It's probably, you might be right there. That portion of it probably is around the 1,200 per residential unit.
What do you think the overall fees are with permit and everything for a residential home?
Single-family residential home, I was thinking they were, they're in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. And I should, I should know that because we just ran them through City Council, but the one thing I am not is an encyclopedia.
And then, and then there's the sewer and the water and...
And then there's the sewer and water fees that are paid separately to expand the system to provide for sewer and water capacity as well.
Any idea what, all-in, per house?
I, I, I don't know. By the time you look at meter fee, water cap fee, sewer cap fee, impact fee, I don't know. We will come back to you with that. I think that's a good number to have, so.
I think it's good for the public to understand that amount of money. I think it's in, I think it's upwards of 16, 18,000 dollars.
So where I was going with that, it's just so the public here understands, is that if they were to develop a 1,400 units in there, aside from having to widen Idaho Street and Prairie Avenue and build all the internal streets and all of that stuff, they'd have to add an additional $1.7 million just, that comes straight out of building permits into an impact fee fund that the city holds and uses to develop and improve infrastructure throughout the rest of the city. And for everyone here who's probably built a, or lives in a house, there's a lot of, I heard a lot of Fieldstone addresses, your building, your initial building permit had an impact fee, and those monies went towards other improvements throughout the area. So for instance, the roundabout at Idaho and Poline was one of those that impact fees paid for partially. And traffic signal that Greens Ferry and Poline was another one. So there are a lot of impact fees. It's just, it's a latent thing because the city has to collect them first and then distribute them. And so it's kind of one of those things where it goes and ebbs and flows a little bit. But you use a lot of it to, all the construction projects that are all driving us nuts with all this traffic, a lot of it's funded by impact fees.
The, the impact fees cover transportation, they cover expansion of our park system, they cover expansion of our police facilities and emergency response that are relative to our, you know, radio towers and the communication there. And we are just now adding a multimodal portion to it to expand our trail, some of our trail system, that within the city. So all based on a philosophy of growth paying for itself.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a, one quick question, too. On, I think they stated that they would, they would have to do the maintenance or do upgrades on Prairie, right? Half of Prairie.
So, so, so yes, they would do their frontage.
Their frontage on Prairie.
Along Prairie Avenue.
So if we, the city ends up putting in the roundabout sometime, then would the city be responsible for the other part of Prairie, for upgrading the other side to bring it into the roundabout? Or how would that work?
That would all be done as a part of that project. So the Idaho Street one is being done by the Highway District. And so they would, they would acquire enough right away to get the roundabout widened and so they could situate and actually construct that roundabout. And then when development would occur on the north side of Prairie, that's when the widening and the more urban amenities with, you know, curbing, sidewalk, street lighting, all of those other safety features would be constructed with development along that whole frontage at that time, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? I mean, we're used to this. We could be here all night. We're good about this. So if there's other questions, let's make sure and ask them now. Nobody else? Okay, last call, fair warning. Okay, we'll go ahead and close it, open it up for Commissioner comments.
Well, I'd start by saying that I'm thanking everybody for coming out for your comments. We appreciate the turnout like this. I wish we had more at every meeting. It's, although the final decision isn't ours to make, it's your elected officials. I think that the developer's within his rights to ask for the hearing, to ask for the zone change. And that's, that's our ultimate goal here, is he within the criteria. You know, we feel for you guys. We're residents, we live here. You know, some of us our whole lives, others transplants, just like everybody else. And I think that the, his best use for the land in the real estate market is referred to as habu, habu, and it's highest and best use. And so if you're looking at conserving land, we could turn the whole Prairie into five-acre lots and you still wouldn't have room to walk. Or you could turn some into private like the city's doing and you could, you know, you build up a couple acres. And like I said, that's your elected officials, you know, and they'll make that decision. And I'd just like, a couple other comments I'd like to refer to are the, the, we don't need to house everybody. I think one of our main important thing is to house the people that are the residents of this city that can't afford a house right now. Kootenay Health released their numbers last week that 60% of all the new people that moved here last year are between 60 and... year are between 60 and 65 years old. My kids went to school here 20, 25 years ago at Seltis Elementary. And back then, we had a wait up line, a waiting line in our cars too. Because predominantly, the schools don't build big parking lots, like Applebee's doesn't. You know, real estate's expensive. If you drive by one of these restaurants, you see a large restaurant, a large footprint with a real small parking lot. Takes money that the city doesn't have. So we feel all your comments and we live them too, you know. And so I'd just like to see this turn out at city hall when, when they make the decision for your neighborhood, you know.
I think that, that's very well put. I know that there was a lot of comments tonight about individuals and why they moved to Idaho. And I think, having conversation with many, part of the reason they moved to Idaho is property rights. And so I think you're absolutely right. Greenstone Cooney too owns that piece of property. So they have, as property owners, the right to come and say, hey, this we feel is not the best use and we'd like to make some adjustments. Our job is to look at the criteria and stay within that. And I appreciate everyone's comments. There was a lot of comments about schools, a lot of comments about schools. But understand that every one of these hearings are disseminated to dozens of agencies. And they have access to that. And if there are concerns, we encourage them to come back. So in the future, if you have information that we need to have, meaning that this particular school is at 120%, if you have data, that information is always important to have. So I encourage that. But I know the schools are always given the information. And in many cases, in most cases, in all cases that I've seen thus far, they come back neutral. So I think there's a lot of pieces. But again, we have to go back to the criteria. And that's what we have to base our decision upon to send to city council. Anybody else? Ray?
I really appreciate everyone here coming out tonight. Obviously, you're here because you have a lot of concern for the community in which you live. We're up here, we're volunteers. And we care about the community in which we live as well. And as a, I'm lucky enough to be a lifelong resident of Post Falls. I moved irrigation pipes out in the fields. My house now sits where I used to move irrigation pipes. In 2002, I got to be part of a process where we got the Fieldstone project approved. And I was working for a developer at the time. A lot of you people out here have addresses in Fieldstone. And we were, met with a lot of, a lot of, a lot of consternation at that time. There's a lot of backlash. There's a lot of anti-development. We don't want, we don't want the city to grow. That's a lot of people. And it's given a lot of you people here a great place to live. The Steinmillers have owned that, that property. Kevin didn't say it, but he's farmed, he farmed that property throughout the 80s and 90s. And his family's owned it since the early 80s. And he is, and in the 90s, they stopped being able to farm it with grass. They were doing grass seed out there because we couldn't burn anymore. So no field burning. Farmers lost their profit stream. And they had to turn to their land as really their only base of, of income. So what you see out there right now is them basically farming it to keep a tax exemption and making enough money to pay the taxes and pay the water bill for the irrigation. So when we have these matters in front of us, we have specific criteria for, you know, what we have to consider. So we're, we're here, we're tasked as a quasi judicial board where we get to weigh the evidence. So these are, on one hand, we have what's been presented to us with regards to the criteria for this kind of approval. And, and we're here to take testimony and learn about the evidence that, that the public brings to us, either for or against that, in favor or against. But we have these specific criteria. And so the comprehensive plan that we have in the city of Post Falls is the basis for all of our land use decisions. It's the foundation. And it went through a pretty extensive update process about a year ago. We went through that and it mapped out the city plan for the next 20 years. And along with that came some code changes. And I remember right when we did these code changes to create the residential mixed zone and the technology mixed zone, when we were looking at the residential mixed zone, this property in particular was brought up in a lot of the workshops as the, the type of property that this would be appropriate for because it allows for a flexibility and not just a homogeneous mass of houses. But it allows a flexibility so that the landowner can, can adjust to market conditions over a 10, 15, 20-year period and provide housing that meets the deeds of the citizens of Post Falls. And I heard several people talk about how we don't have to house everyone that comes here. And the fact is, is that the people who are coming here can afford the housing. It's the people who grew up here, or maybe graduating from, from Post Falls High School this year, who in five years want to, you know, they go to college, they come back and they want to build a house, they want to buy a house here, and they want to live here. But they've been priced out of the market because the, you know, the out of, out of state, out of area people can afford it. And that's a real problem. That's a real problem with, because if, if the people who grew up here can't afford it, then what are we doing? You know, we're just pushing the people who live here and grew up here out. So with regards to the, the criteria for approval, the criteria one is, A is, is it in accordance with the future land use map? And it, it fits like a puzzle piece with the land use map. The land use map fits that absolutely perfectly. With regards to the zone map, the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan have to be met. And they've, they have been met. So there's, they've presented a lot of goals and policies that support this zone change. Street classifications, Idaho Street is a minor arterial, Prairie's a major arterial. The internal streets that collect, are collectors, which are all higher classifications that will serve the, the higher density stuff that's clustered around them, which goes with condition or criteria D, which says a commercial high density residential zoning needs to be on these higher classifications roads. Those, by definition, those higher classification roads are anything other than local. So if it's a minor collector, a major collector, a arterial of any sort, that meets that criteria. And then limited or neighborhood commercial and lower density be assigned further away from higher urban activity. And that's exactly what this proposes, is being further away from the urban activity down here in the Seltis, Seltis and Spokane Street core. So that's, oh, that's a lot of talking. Let's shut up now.
Anybody else? Comments?
I am, I think that, that overall the RM zone, it's, in theory, it looks, it's good. It, it looks good. I like that it, there is some diversity in housing, townhouses, condos. I, I think, I think some, some, some big issues, and I think what a lot of people are here to say is that, does this really maintain or enhance the community levels of service, being fire, being schools, being, and sometimes, high density doesn't do that. It, it doesn't end up enhancing the community levels of service. However, I think I would feel, because I, I think that the RM could be a good fit there, I would be, I, I would be agreeable to recommending this to the city with a density cap. And I think the applicant said something like, we wouldn't, I couldn't see us going more than 250 over what RM would allow. RM would allow at total max, it looks like somewhere around 1,200. So if we added the 250 to that, that would be a 1,450 density cap, which still sounds like a lot of housing, but a lot of units, but it's certainly a lot less than what we possibly could see if it were just a multifamily parcel. So I, I would be comfortable in that.
Anybody else?
No, I, the only thing I want, would like to say is, like, it's been said before, we're, we're not the final decision makers here. We, we just have to make a recommendation based on the criteria that was met by the staff and the developer. So I would encourage all of you, thank you for coming here. And I would really encourage all of you to go to the city council meeting with your information when they have, when it comes up before city council, your information on the schools and everything else that bothers you. This is, that's your right. And I would encourage you to go do that.
Field, from a density cap standpoint, how would, obviously, we're not reopening the hearing, but speaking directly for legal counsel, is there?
I think you can roll that into the recommendation. We can recommend the, and again, this is, if you wanted to, wanted to recommend to council, it could be a proposed, you know, recommendation for inclusion in the development agreement or something to that effect. Because with the RM, there, there will be a development agreement for them.
Right. Okay. Any other comment? I think the thing that people don't always understand is that we don't get to make our decisions based on feelings and emotions, that we have to follow the criteria and, and that we move it along. And in that realm...
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
If we can make a cap on density, can we make a cap on height? Or does it have to be the 45 foot for the multifamily?
That might be a question for John. I believe it's tied to the underlying zone. But theoretically...
Theoretically, you could tie it to the development agreement.
As a cap, about 35, what's a single family or the?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
It's a 10-foot variation.
Something to keep in mind that a lot of that area for multifamily is in the center. So it's, it's kind of towards the middle of their development.
Typically, what you see is if there is a reduced height, it's scaled. So when you're adjacent to other single family development, and you go two stories and then you step up to three, it's a lot of times how you see it in place. But you could place it over the whole thing, too.
Yeah, I think density cap makes sense. I think the, the height restrictions, again, because it's centered into the middle and it's not...
Well, it's not really, though. There's some on Idaho. There's some that they have where they can have multifamily. It's kind of spread out there. And I'm just thinking it's kind of a compromise, you know, to, it's not still R1. It's allowing for more density, but it's capping the height for the development so that they can't have a big apartment building here, or a three-story here, and a three-story here, and a three-story over here. Just might, just a thought there. I don't know.
Other comment?
I just got to ask another question now. You know, what we have in our staff report, just a drawing at this point, nothing's been really contractually agreed upon what it's going to, I mean, this is probably, it's going to look something like that, but it could move around, you know. All the, the multifamily could be all in the middle, or it could be kind of spread out a little bit, as long as it meets that certain criteria, right?
Well, it couldn't sway too far. I mean, what they're doing is they're agreeing that in those regions generally, that that's what they're putting there. So if they were to propose a multifamily and suddenly throw it on the northeast corner, that more than likely would be construed as a major shift in the proposal. And then we'd have to re, you know, we have to look at whether it was a minor amendment or a major amendment. And I would coordinate that with the legal.
And that comes all in a development agreement, correct?
Yeah, the development agreement's the binding document that we go to council because council's making the decision. They can take your recommendation today, be it a density cap or a height. Ultimately, they may not choose other, or they may change it at that time with their decision.
Okay. Anything else? If none, then I would look for a motion in some capacity at this time.
I'll make one. I would move to recommend approval of North Place Zone Change File Number RNZE0001-2020, finding that it meets the approval criteria A through E, and that criteria F is not applicable because it's with regards to industrial zoning, and recommending a cap, a density cap of 1,400 units for the property.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other further comment? No, call for a vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Gimbal?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Okay, I know we've got administrative reports that we need to go through, but can we take a three minute to clear things out? Three minute break.
We'll bring everybody back. A couple of things to go over real quick. Number one, as mentioned before, Ray stepped down for this one, but I want to make sure that everybody understands, there was a piece that was missed, and that was an action item. So there will not be a action item taken on both of these URDs this evening. That will actually take place Friday morning via Zoom on a special meeting. So what we are going to do is, we are going to conduct the entire hearing this evening. We will hear everything. I believe we have individuals that choose to speak in support. We will go through all of the data and the information, and then we will reconvene as a commission on Friday to make the final piece. Is that correct, Field?
That is correct.
Okay. I believe it's your turn.
Yay. Thank you so much for being here this evening, and it's not even nine o'clock yet. Making good time. Okay, so, again, we're here to talk about the urban, proposed urban renewal district along the Pleasant View corridor. We've been talking about this for quite some time now. This is for the actual urban renewal district plan for that corridor. We've talked about various aspects of it. We've talked about the eligibility study. We've talked about the feasibility study. We've talked about the boundaries. These are all things that we have gone over, over the past year or plus. So kind of a quick overview of the project, and then we'll get into the, what you're actually looking at this evening. So I'll cover the project history, the district location, the boundaries and statistics, the existing and proposed zoning that is within this district, and the proposed infrastructure. The question for the Planning and Zoning Commission is, is the proposed Pleasant View Urban Renewal District in accordance with the comprehensive plan? And again, this will be one of those decisions to be made on Friday morning via Zoom. However, you can talk about it all you want tonight. And it's a decision that then goes to the city council as a recommendation, and it'll go to city council June 1st. So, wanted to kind of show a little bit of a project history and timeline here. And while this timeline starts at May 14th, 2020, it was one of the first projects that I talked about when I, was brought to me in my office when I got here in early, well, I got here at the end of 2018, and they started coming to our office in 2019. But I also heard at that point that this was something that was proposed 12 years prior to that. So this is something that we did look at approximately 14 years ago, and determined that at that time, it just wasn't quite the right timing on it. But when they came in a couple of years ago, over two years ago now, we started talking about what is happening along this corridor, what is being proposed, and who's looking at it, and what should the city do in terms of potential development along this corridor. So, just showing the timeline here, where we did have multiple city council meetings starting in May of 2020. They went through the process of commissioning the eligibility study, followed by, you know, the approval of this eligibility study, going through the process of approving a feasibility study, and all this stuff until we get to this point here today. But as you can see from this list, we've got a number of times where it has gone before the city council or Planning and Zoning Commission, whether it was at meetings, or workshops, or public forums. So we have been talking about this for a while. The Pleasant View URD is approximately 552 acres of land, 600 acres in total when you include the ride-of-way. It's located between Celtae Way at the southern end and State Highway 53 at the northern end. Part of it is also stretched along, stretched along Prairie Avenue. And there are approximately 25 parcels, and it ranging from 4.5 to 68 acres in size. Again, as a reminder, the 68-acre parcel, this one here, was part of the impetus for working to create this urban renewal district, which you'll see how the infrastructure plan ties into that in a minute. So, in the feasibility study, it indicated various scenarios as to how we could potentially develop, and it was determined that scenario two was the best route to develop and get this district rolling, and to best create, get the increment moving, so that we can see the increment utilized to develop the infrastructure along the corridor, to make these developable and useful parcels. Scenario two starts with the development aiming for that 68-acre parcel. So how do we get there? By utilizing, by getting the infrastructure in place, we can see that parcel begin first get it online, and as it builds out, it slowly pulls in more of this property along the, within the Copper Basin area. The property on the far eastern side is the school district, and the school district has plans to develop a high school there in the coming years, and they are now down to the point where they potentially need one within about seven years. So we need to be able, we have that timeline that we need to be able to get infrastructure into that location in order to provide them the water and sewer, in order to develop a high school. And then, from that point on, we anticipate that development will gradually develop south of the Project Drive site, the 68 acres that I pointed out first, and kind of work its way down. And this is how the scenario is planned. Doesn't mean that it is going to develop that way, doesn't mean that it necessarily has to develop that way. That's how we anticipate seeing it happen, based on the availability of infrastructure. So in the near term, we're looking at getting the infrastructure in place in order to bring on these 68 acres. I believe that we've got a lift station proposed just north of Prairie. We've got the water line, additional water lines coming off of Pleasant View and sewer, in order to get the site developed to its full potential. And we will also be incorporating infrastructure improvements at the, for the intersection to deal with traffic, at the intersection of Grange and Pleasant View. And this is all, this isn't just city stuff. This is the development, the developer, the company has a, has a lot to do with this. They will be footing a lot of this bill as they work through the process, and hopefully, as the way that increment is developed, or is created through the district, we'll be able to provide them with reimbursement through this process. The city is also working to allocate funding to this from our wastewater fees and water fees that have been set aside for this type of work already. And additionally, we will be aiming to use some annexation funds. The district itself is likely to bring in around $1.5 million in annexation fees as it's developed, and we anticipate using approximately a million to help fund these improvements for the Phase One projects, to get this online and get it working. Long term, you can see how Pleasant View will be developed, and additional sewer lines will be put in place in order to service those properties within the district. So again, that was the overview of the district, and kind of what we're looking to try and do in order to bring it on, in order to build the increment, in order to add the additional properties to, within the city for industrial uses, as well as other commercial and residential uses on the northern end. The future land use map shows that you can see the corridor along here, which is, the end of the future land use plan was for business, commercial type of uses. A few months ago, these properties came to, one was last month, and one was a couple of months ago, I think in February, I can't remember when, for the purposes of annexation and zoning. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for the district for the annexation and zoning. For this end was all industrial, and the piece up along the northern side of Prairie Avenue was kind of a mixed, mixed zone area, where we've got the CCM, RM, and industrial zoning, in addition to the school property, which is set aside as public reserve zoning. So, how does this help to further the comprehensive plan and implement the comprehensive plan? And basically, looking at, again, what we're looking at is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies? I'm not going to necessarily read every single one of them, but I'll try and highlight some of them, so that we can talk about that, and we can always go back to it if you want. The comprehensive plan, and the way that this supports it is, "to grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for the Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health." Generally speaking, there you go, we're looking at industrial zones, we're looking at a commercial mixed zone, we're looking at a residential mixed zone. So you've kind of got a flavor of how an area can develop and be partially self-sustaining up there, when you see some commercial go into areas that potentially have residential within them, in addition to the industrial uses further to the south that are nicely separated by Prairie Avenue. Maintain and improve provision for high-quality, affordable, efficient community services. That's what you'll see along the, at that intersection of around Pleasant View and Prairie, potentially with the community, commercial mixed zone. Plan for establishing quantities of land uses within Post Falls, supporting the community needs. We can look at that, whether it's the commercial mix, or the residential mix, or the industrial. They all kind of tie together. Again, it's an overall district that is working to support not only itself, but the city in general. And again, this is working to maintain the city of Post Falls' long-term fiscal health. These districts usually last around 20 years, and they work to, again, to develop them, the districts out to the highest in potential, highest potential for the infrastructure within those areas. Policies, it supports land use patterns. Again, these are zones that were found by the Planning and Zoning Commission at previous meetings to meet the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan, touching on that land use pattern. Encourage development patterns that provide suitably scaled, daily need services within walking distance of residential areas. Again, kind of looking at that commercial mix and residential mixed zones that are up in that area, likely to be able to provide those community, community uses, commercial uses. Prioritize the location of new industrial development in areas that provide close proximity to major transportation facilities. So you're looking at Highway 53, and you're looking at I-90. This is the perfect corridor in order to, you know, fit the industrial uses into a quick access to Spokane and at North Idaho as well, further North Idaho with Highway 53, I mean. Consider a location for multifamily development in areas that have access to arterial and collector streets. Help buffer higher and lower intensity development patterns about compatible existing uses. This kind of relates to that, some of that RM, maybe that CM. We may see a bit of some multifamily up in that area as it develops out over time. Policies, work to improve street connectivity, improving the walkability, public health, safety, transportation efficiency. So with the district, we're going to see the improvements along Pleasant View and Prairie, widening and adding in multi-use trails, and sidewalks, and street trees, and creating a much better roadway system than is the existing two-lane, two-lane road. Again, encouraging environmentally and economically sound measures. The sites will be developed in accordance with the zoning code, which helps to eliminate those air, noise, and water pollution issues. Expand local living wage jobs, looking to bring in more of those industrial jobs. Local business community, work to enhance, sustain, and diversify local economic base. Again, trying to bring in industrial, commercial, residential uses, all within that same corridor. And that's what I've got. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
If you would have presented that at 7:00, I might have had a question.
No problem. I'm glad that I waited then.
I'm kidding.
I think that part of it is, we have asked a lot of questions. We have had a lot of dialogue about this over time, and I think that you are pretty familiar with it, but I would be happy to field any additional questions that you've developed over time, because you have had a chance to think about this at different points in time along.
Is Walsh Comer going to present anything additionally, or...
No, no. But they are, but they are here to help answer any additional questions or any details. I was going to give Matt the night off.
Okay.
But he still came, because...
Can you pull your sewer map back up there? I see in the presentation here, it's phased.
It is phased.
I wanted to see what was, who, what areas were being serviced, and what sequence, sewer-wise.
Again, so, there's the water. So we've got a lift station. So when the sewer first initially goes in, the primary purpose is to get the lift station set up here, and the sewer line, Force Main... set up here and the sewer line of Force Main would be developed to get it, get the waste down to Seltis area.
How does that access, service that parcel?
So that is going to allow for Copper Basin to be able to tie in, run their flows to that lift station.
Yeah.
My understanding.
The driver though, the, you called it the driving parcel, how does it have access?
The gray one, that's where they do tie into that. So they don't, they can, I'm not 100% sure exactly how it's going to be done, but the plan is that they're going to tie into that sewer line either in front of their parcel or whether they have to bump to the lift station, but I think we're having them go straight into that sewer line.
With a pressure system?
Yes, and there's waste.
Yes, yes, sir. They can tie into that, as Bob mentioned, whether they, whether they gravity feed back to the lift station. This is a giant lift station that drains kind of north Post Falls. Or they'll have an onsite lift station, smaller one, where they would tap into the smaller Force Main, which would end up down in Seltis. With the goal being how, so to get out of the gate with a feasibility study, which you're probably tired of us talking about this, is how do we get this parcel served at a, at the most reasonable cost that we can, but not throw away everything that we've done, all the infrastructure that we've done? So this is the, the intermittent phased approach to getting service to that first parcel.
So you have like five phases here. Is there any, is there any sequence to that or just we know the others are later?
Well, kind of, we kind of showed it through, a little bit through that process in a sense.
Is there like a planned timeline or just?
It's as, it's as development comes in and as increment builds.
Can I jump in real quick?
Absolutely.
So based on the assumed scenario two, where this thing develops out, we have a pretty detailed infrastructure phasing plan that parallels the development phases. So, and we only, we serve parcels as they develop, right? Because what we're, we're trying not to get out ahead of ourselves with costs. We're trying to pay for as much of the infrastructure as we can with increment that's coming in, in the back. And so it's, it's kind of a, we, we have an upfront investment to get the ball rolling, but then ideally increment will be there to pay for the improvements as it develops out.
And is the increment as a reimbursement?
Well, it, it kind of works in a couple of different ways, like, so yes, the increment will be able to reimburse a developer if they feel like that infrastructure is good for the public improvements, if that is within the plan. The Urban Renewal Agency also has the ability to potentially bond for improvements and do some improvements themselves through this process. And those are the two likely scenarios. The, the way that, that's preferred is that the developer comes in, puts in the public infrastructure and during that time applies to the URA for reimbursement once it is completed. And the URA can reimburse them over a period of time as the increment kind of comes in.
Yeah.
It takes years for increment to come in.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is that the plan for like for phase one here?
It's, again, you're, you are correct. Phase one was a way to get this online and we will look at phase two when we get to that point and see what can be done and if there is certain partnerships that are available or not.
I, I think, I think maybe what you're asking is, is this parcel, if they're being asked to upfront money to help pay for this, are they going to be reimbursed? And the model, the financial model does assume that, that there would be a reimbursement.
Is that the plan or is there some other funding mechanism for this first phase?
There, this first phase is, is a mixed piece. So there is some, some wastewater money that is collected and, and helped decide for this type of, of infrastructure improvements. There's some water funds that have already been allocated and set aside for this. And then there is the annexation fees that we are utilizing for this because again, we collect, we're going to collect approximately $1.5 million in annexation fees for this development.
Gotcha.
For this entire, entire district. So we felt that that was valid to be used. And we are seeking, again, we've also got another half million in the grant funds that was received at the state. And we are seeking additional grant funds through the, both the EDA grant as well as a RACE grant, which are both federal. So trying to tie it all together so that we can do some economic development. This is one of the, one of the only tools that we have to use in Idaho to help with economic development. And so we're using it to the best of our ability at this time.
Yeah. Well, it looks like you guys are working hard to try and make that happen. Any other questions?
I had a administrative question. Looking through the staff packet, page 177. It says, Post Falls City Center, Urban Renewal District, the feasibility study.
That one's next.
That's next.
That's next. No, no, no. Page 200 then starts the next one. So if somebody can back, I mean, and maybe I'm wrong because we, you know, three and a half hours, but.
You might be right.
Because I double-checked it twice. I'm just thinking, is there, is there something from the Metz group for an economic feasibility study for Pleasant View?
We provided a feasibility, we did a presentation on the feasibility study for, no, well, Welch Comer did the feasibility study for this one. The Metz group one is for the downtown and we covered the feasibility study at a previous meeting.
I'm just thinking, okay, so then maybe this one.
It was inserted in the wrong place.
Inserted in the wrong place. Well, then there's even on, I don't even know what page it is. Just give me one second here. Page 223, it says Post Falls Downtown Urban Renewal. So it doesn't even say City Center, but it's the same area. But we can, I can just, there is no other pages, 177 to 200, we can just kind of exclude that. And there, there is no feasibility study that should go in there. What's in, in the staff report for this one is what should be there.
There was a Welch Comer feasibility study, I believe, in that giant PDF.
Yeah, there was, okay. I didn't know there was something else and that was misplaced, okay. So we can just exclude that. Somebody correct me if I'm looking at it wrong, but.
I think it was just misinserted.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on this one? So because this is a administrative staff report and we have not necessarily an applicant, but we are simply getting the information to make a recommendation at a later time. I know we have some fine people here that have trudged all evening that choose to, that wish to speak. At what point would you like to bring that in?
Well, we could either do it between the two districts. So you do it right now after this one and then do it again after the other, or if they want to speak generally in favor of the districts or against the districts, they could specify at that time. What do you think, Field, do we need to separate these two or?
Well, I mean, it, it's not a public hearing.
Correct.
The code provides, let me just pull it up because I had it up here. I can find it. I lost it. The, so the code provides that you're, you're here to review the plan and then make your recommendation. So it's kind of up to, up to the chair and up to the commission how you want to go, but it's not a public hearing, it's just a review and recommendation. So it's a little bit different process.
So I do believe that we have individuals here that wish to speak in support of the URD. My recommendation would be as we pause after thoroughly reviewing the first one, before we begin the second one, just allow them time to come in, speak in support or against, and then they can merrily make their way home while we wrap things up. So do we, we don't have anything signed up per se, do we?
Um, we have one.
I'm assuming we're sticking to a four-minute timeline? Wonderful. Wishing to speak in favor, do you guys both want to come up together? Christine Petit and Julie Holt, please, come on up. And thank you for being here so long.
Thank you, it's been fun. Good evening Chairman Davis and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Christine Petit. I am the president and CEO of the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce right across the street and I currently reside at 3343 East LaChon Court. Don't know if I need to do that. With me is Julie Holt, the 2021 Board Chair for the Post Falls Chamber. She currently resides at 4720 Inverness Drive. On behalf of the chamber and our board, I want to express our support for the two proposed urban renewal plans. Each of these plans addresses issues that members of our business community have noted are needed in our city for many years. The downtown plan builds on the improvements we've made in our city center and incorporates a number of needed public improvements, which will enhance the attractiveness of downtown Post Falls to new businesses. These include street and sidewalk improvements, additional public parking, infrastructure upgrades, and other enhancements which will assist in the upgrading of our downtown district.
The proposed plan for public improvements along the Pleasant View corridor will open up that area of our city to light and heavy industrial development, creating good-paying jobs with benefits and diversifying our economic base. This area currently has the road and rail connections that many manufacturing companies are seeking in their, in the improvements proposed in this plan. Including a transload facility and the extension of sewer and water infrastructure will greatly improve North Idaho's competitive position for new economic development. The chamber has seen the many accomplishments created through the prudent use of urban renewal programs in our city over the past 20 years and we fully support the creation of these two new urban renewal districts. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And thank you for volunteering in such an important role for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay? What's that? Do we need to have a formal where this is not a public hearing?
I don't think we need a, it would be helpful for the record.
So if you could come up, you can ask your question and then do us a favor and fill out one of those forms just so we have, okay, come on up.
Chris Larson, my address is 10251 West Prairie Avenue. Question I have about the Pleasant View URD. What are the rail crossing improvements that are going to be with the increase in industrial, with trucking coming in? Is part of that going to be to help bridge those intersections that are, according to Burlington Northern, it's a five hours that they spend on the track blocking that Pleasant View area. Being that it's in my jurisdiction where the refueling depot is, I'm very familiar with the time delays that happens and occur due to the oil refinering, or the oil distribution for BNSF.
Okay, and if I could get you to fill out one of those forms just so we have for the record. Mr. Seale, do you want to address that?
The transload facility is working in coordination with BNSF to determine how they're going to be having that spur access their site and utilize it. The remainder of BNSF line is likely to go away in coming years because their sole use, user along downtown here will be closing in the, in the near future. As for those railroad crossings, at this time they're, Bill, what kind of safety measures are there right now? I don't know if it was included in the grant application if we had any improvements.
I think the, the question was relative to their main line that runs along Highway 53, is that correct?
Correct.
So the, yeah, so ultimately, so the, the, not being in the city limits and that portion won't be, but we do know the Post Falls Highway District has a project where they're building a grade separated crossing over that rail line. Then they'll have an interchange on the north side of 53 that will kind of wrap back in. So they've got that into work, I'm not real sure on their timeframe. I was thinking it was.
2025 or 2026 is when they're doing the raised.
Fairly soon. So they've, they've got it, I believe they already have a grant application that's helping support them financially with that budget. So, so they're complete, going to do a complete grade separated crossing. I appreciate that, that's, that's not a great location, so as it currently stands, so.
Excellent. Perfect. Okay. Any other questions on this one? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to the next one. At this point, do we want to invite Mr. Kimball back?
Do we have to? Oh, yes.
And that was in the record, can you believe that?
I'll be quiet.
Slips out, it's after nine. You can't know what's going on anymore. I had too much sugar earlier and I haven't eaten anything else. Okay, Post Falls City Center Urban Renewal District, downtown Urban Renewal District. Oops. We used to have a city center district, now we're working on creating the downtown Urban Renewal District. So a quick history on this, we're going to go over the project history, look at the district location, boundary statistics, existing and proposed zoning, and the proposed infrastructure. Again, the question is, is the proposed downtown Urban Renewal District in accordance with the comprehensive plan? Again, this is one of those plans that we have talked about over the last number of years, starting in 2017, as we neared the closure of the city center district, it began another conversation regarding, should we be looking at developing another one? Because, you know, a majority, a lot of the time that the renewal district was open for the city center, I think it can be seen that it was during a real downturn in the economy. So it didn't quite create and generate the increment as anticipated. And we also saw that there was a need for additional support, support to the infrastructure improvements in the downtown area. So again, in 2019, we started to look at this in the, for the eligibility study and it was determined around that same time that we wanted to, or, you know, the public basically, when they came and spoke, it was, it encouraged us to go out and do, and update our city center master plan, do an addendum to that to look at, which was recently before the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the city council for adoption of those new infrastructure improvements that should be focused on within the downtown area. So that was a driving force and held up the process for about a year, partially because of COVID, because we could not hold public forums. So we did modified routes in order to do that. After that master, the update to the master plan was completed, we were able to finally complete the feasibility study as well. And that all ties into, again, the creation of this Urban Renewal District plan. Okay, so again, the boundary size, as you can see from the original, is, is larger. We brought in areas further to the north of 90 and kind of looked at this and further to the, to the east. In the original plan, Idaho veneer was not in the district, they didn't want to be in the district, that wasn't part of their long-range plans. However, with the closure of Idaho veneer and as they had neared, neared closure, they noted that it would be ideal to go ahead and be included within the district. And we recognize that today, that there's a lot of water, sewer, and roadway infrastructure improvements that need to take place in order for that site to build out to, again, a form of a highest and best use, or whatever that may be. There is development that is beginning to happen there, you can even see the movement of, you know, they're starting to do earth moving there and removal of a lot of the buildings. So overall, the size of the bound, the size of the district is 549 acres. They range in size from a fraction of an, of a, of an acre up to 18.4 acres. The zoning and land use within the district is varied. You've got a lot of different types that are throughout the district. You've got 104 acres of CCS, that's our community commercial services zoning, you've got limited commercial, a small amount of industrial, even smaller amount of high industrial, and then you've got the R3 zone, and then you've got three different tiers of the SMART code. The SMART code five does support the commercial uses in addition to housing. So you've got a big breakdown of commercial and residential uses within the district. Here's kind of a breakdown of the overall. So the SC5 and the CCS are the primary zoning within that district. When we met before, we had talked about the phasing and infrastructure plan. And again, the Urban Renewal Plan and the feasibility study focused on the increment that can support the development of tier one infrastructure projects. And it is very feasible in order to develop out the tier one infrastructure projects. We also have the tier two, tier three, and tier four projects that can be funded should there be enough money to cover those projects or can be, can replace something within the tier one infrastructure if it becomes a priority. We don't ever 100% know how things are going to develop out. These are our best estimates. And utilizing the best available data at the time and where we are seeing permits come in or conversations begin to happen. You know, so again, we kind of covered this when we previously looked over the city center update. But as you can see, some of the major improvements that we are looking at are doing a street completion plan. That's getting on-street parking, developed out throughout the downtown. Support for the Idaho veneer site, getting that developed. Certain frontage improvements throughout the area. Completion of McReynolds, that's on the landing sites. We're looking at the completion of that site. You know, in addition, you know, a lot of the city center plan also called for things such as wayfinding signage or public art. Improvements to the water tower, making sure that that is able to stay as an iconic piece within the downtown. You know, looking to make improvements to Warren Park potentially. You know, completing the Esplanade. These are all pieces that tie into the creation of a downtown. And, you know, it's what people look for when you're coming to work in a city or live in a city. You want a downtown. And this is, this, again, is a part of being able to spur the additional creation of the downtown. And we see a lot of commercial and mixed-use buildings beginning to look at development within our downtown. And we do hope to anticipate seeing, you know, ground actually breaking on the landing site within the year. So I think that is an ideal time to move this Urban Renewal District forward so that the increment can help pay for additional improvements to the area in order to just, again, build that downtown and make it, you know, fit what the city wants to see. Again, so we're here to see how it is consistent with the comp plan. Again, looking at growing and sustaining a balanced and resilient economy for Post Falls. Establishing types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls that support the community needs. You know, focusing on the fiscal, fiscal health of the community. You know, this has shown that it does support the land use patterns. We've got the mixture of commercial and residential properties within the downtown. You know, encouraging development patterns that provide that suitably scaled daily new services. This kind of creates a better walkable downtown so that when you live downtown, you can walk to those commercial centers, whether it's on Spokane Street, or whether it's at Idaho and Fourth Street, or whether it's going to be up near the Seltice Spokane Street area. You know, those are all sections within the downtown that are easily walkable from your neighborhoods, whether you, whether you live in a single family house, or whether you, you live in an apartment or a condo, or what it may be. This helps to provide that downtown feel. Looking at encouraging compatible infill development and redevelopment. That is one of the key pieces within this downtown plan. That's, that's what came about, again, in the city center master plan as well as the updated addendum. Looking at encouraging compact pedestrian oriented mixed-use development patterns in neighborhood and regional centers, implement street design through a range of features. Plan for and work to create a green belt system, looking at the natural beauty and transportation areas. One of the things that did come about, I believe, in the recent master, Parks and Rec master plan was looking at trying to create additional gathering areas within the, within the city center. In addition to potentially even the Avista project that's being developed now along the landings. So we're kind of looking at as land becomes available or may become available, you know, that'll be stuff that ties into this. Encouraged development of the Post Falls City Center as a community focal point, combining commercial, civic, cultural, residential, and recreation uses. These are all, again, tying back to the consistency with the comp plan, that the comp plan really is, does support this type of Urban Renewal District as to how it is intended to develop out over time. Again, focusing on that first floor, commercial uses, on-street and off-street parking, street trees, landscaping, and really just trying to work to retain our existing businesses and commercial enterprises. I mean, that's one of the biggest things you want to do is be able to retain businesses when you do get them. And by, you know, creating a focal point within the city, you know, you create more interest in the downtown. You start to see that those businesses that have come in, they can actually stay because they are supported, because they are seeing additional traffic and foot traffic and neighborhood use of them. City center plan was to prepare and adopt an updated plan for the downtown Post Falls. So we covered this, you know, this is what we, this was within the comprehensive plan was looking at, let's do an update to that city center plan. And that's what I got. I needed a question slide. I guess we never added one of those.
Questions?
Yeah, can, can you just remind me, since we don't see it too often, the, the smart code and what's allowable? And each, you know, SC three, well, you know, is it three, four, and five?
Well, five is the one that's higher, higher uses, higher intensity uses. When you get into the four, three and four, there's very, very little commercial that's permitted within those.
Yeah, you have with your SC four, technically what it states is a commercial use on each corner of a block. That being said, there is ways in the code to amend that provision through administrative reviews. And then the SC five, typically in your smart code, we are looking at your, your neighborhood artisan manufacturing, commercial, retail type services. It's not the industrial manufacturing type stuff you're going to see in other parts of the community.
And the SC five is primarily along Spokane Street and Fourth and some a third maybe or railroad. And then the SC four is down tucked into where you see a lot of that residential property right now. And then the Idaho veneer site did a zone change recently for the SC five.
And usually that's typical. You're going to see your higher uses along your major corridors and routes. And, I mean, one of the planning principles is the farthest you're ever going to see that is two blocks of heavy commercial in a downtown. We're probably not going to yield that just because of the limited housing. And then the SC four, the purpose of that is to support those potential uses on those corridors. And so that's what kind of creates that shape that was, to support that.
Thanks.
Other questions, thoughts, concerns, comments? Seeing none, I would ask you to retain all of this information. I am betting that we get a recap on Friday morning. True or false?
Very, I can do a very.
A brief, a brief recap.
I'm squeezing you guys in between like two other meetings that I'm going to have to leave early or.
You don't want to take up too much of your time.
I know. Well, this is more, this is more important, so I appreciate your time.
So the information will be sent out and we will make a recommendation on Friday morning. If there is no other questions or comments from Mr. Seal, we will move on. No?
I had a question about Friday morning. Did you, did Field mention we need one person here or how?
We need one person in attendance in, not necessarily the chamber, but somewhere within City Hall.
Yeah, and it, and it can be the, the director, so theoretically all.
Oh, I can. Okay, so you don't have to.
But it would, it would be helpful, the, the chair will need to sign, so at some point.
I guess I'll be here.
Two times until 1:30.
If anybody else wants to join me, that'd be fantastic. No, that works out fine. I'll plan on being here. Okay. Any other administrative or staff reports?
None.
Commissioner comments? Anything for the good of the order? We are encroaching on four and a half hours, so we want to go to five? Nope, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.